Okay. Good evening, everyone. We will begin, it's November 19th. Please rise. Oh, we're being recorded. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay. We will begin this evening with the town administrator's report.
Good evening. Thank you. First, on the grant front, we have some exciting news. We were awarded a $750,000 grant in support of the work that needs to be done to prepare for the Pine Street project as it relates to the relocation of infrastructure. It was one of the projects that we were hoping to get funding for. The preparations for town meeting have been continuing. We'll be talking in more detail about it tonight, towards the end of the agenda with you all. But the warrant was mailed out last Thursday. I'm also going to be with FinCom tomorrow evening, hopefully to answer some questions, as well as for tonight's discussion here. I mentioned last week, at our meeting on the capital program, that we've been going through all the departmental capital requests. We're going to be moving forward with that plan, and we'll be coming before you all in the future. We'll also be working closely with Ryan Hall and the CIC on that. As a follow-up on the capital planning meeting, I appreciate the thoughtfulness about the preparations and the presentations of the staff and the questions. I thought it was a good stepping off point for us to begin the process of having these sort of quarterly discussions. And I also wanted to recognize there's, on the staff side at least, a lot of opportunities that we have for improvement, so we're looking forward to how we can make future meetings even more successful. Getting into the departments a little bit, I wanted to highlight the effort of the DPW team all over town, but specifically the Laxwell installation that has occurred and the efforts to prepare Fisherman's Beach for the winter. In addition, I have a little bit of news on the DPW front. After a lot of deliberation, a lot of discussion, we are going to be able to offer 10 additional spots for boat storage at Phillips for this winter. In addition to that, so the folks that are sort of next on the list for the lottery will be notified and will go down in order for, we understand some folks may have already made other accommodations, but we will, you know, in future years be able to offer, I believe it's 20 total, and that's what we plan to be doing. In addition to that, we're going to look to do a little bit of a market survey to make sure that our fees remain both affordable and competitive for next fall. They won't be changing now, but we want to just take a look at what other municipalities in addition to private storage is doing as well, just as sort of a survey over time. We haven't looked at that in quite a while. The Senior Center has been really busy lately as well. They were part of a video that was highlighting the intergenerational program they do with the high school this week. And they've been continuing to offering program that has the building, you know, absolutely buzzing every day, so I wanted to recognize that. They were also kind enough to host the veterans' breakfast last week, which was also quite successful. On the rec department front, Charlotte has jumped in with both feet on the space at the Clark. We began programming this week, and we're looking forward to a busy winter. In addition, over the last week or so, I believe the FBI has been using it for training, so it has been a busy spot from something that was maybe underutilized before, and we're looking forward to that continuing. Also with rec, I wanted to give a plug for the indoor Thanksgiving Farmers Market, which is this Sunday here at the high school from 10 to 1:00. And then sort of a placeholder of market calendars for the holiday parade and marketplace, which will be at town hall. Quick update on the HR front. We've had qualified candidates who've begun the interview process, both for finance director and town clerk. We're having phone screens, then first round. We will decide after the first round if folks will be progressing from there, but we've gotten a couple of good candidates in both positions. We also completed the salary survey for the assessor position, which I had mentioned at our last meeting, I believe. And looking at the peers and super peers, we are somewhere between 22% and 25% behind the market. So, you know, I'm not sure if you would like me to come back with a slide or two that shows that, or if this can be something I could work with HR to reclassify and make sure with Patrick that it's built into future budgets and that we can handle it for the rest of this year. That's one thing that I didn't know if it would prompt a discussion, or if you're comfortable with me moving forward, that would be absolutely wonderful. Anyone have any questions? That is the TA report. I'm happy to answer any questions folks may have. And later tonight, I'll obviously have more information on the budget projections, as well as participating in the discussion with you all for the warrant.
I can't recall if this is before Nick or during your tenure, but I think we all were supportive of a full-time assessor with a market rate adjustment. I mean, we've spoken about it.
Yes.
So, I don't think-
I think that is before, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
I definitely wanted to give you a sense of what that looked like before we made any changes, so I appreciate that, and we'll move forward with it.
I just want to make sure the comparisons are equal. It's not, we're not comparing a 34-hour work week to a 40-hour work week or 38-hour work week. Just to make sure-
To be honest, I was going off the assumption they were all 37, because that's what most of the towns that I have worked with, so I can double-check that.
Okay.
And the other outlier, if you were to call through the towns that are identified regularly as our peers, I just want to call it out, is Linfield. Their assessor is the chief assessor in three different communities and is richly compensated for that work, so that is not one that we are including in this survey for that matter. But I'll make sure to normalize that information as well.
Great. Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Raise?
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, the next agenda item is public comments. We'll welcome anyone to the microphone for a public comment. Please state your name and your address, and we will limit public comment to three minutes. Participant, please.
Hello? Does work? Hello? Can you hear me? Okay. Hi. Mike Kelleher, Pine Hill Road, Swamp Scott. Good evening. I'm really excited for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Here to express the interest, I watched the last meeting, and the interest and excitement in submitting an RFP for the Hawthorne property. My hope is to bring forward a concept that turns this space into a true community gem, something that residents and visitors can enjoy while the town works through the long-term planning and funding needed for the site's future. We have an incredible waterfront location with some elbow grease creativity and grit. The Hawthorne can come back to life as a vibrant destination, one that offers food, entertainment, family-friendly events, concerts, flexible community space. This is a chance to show our residents what could be if Swamp Scott embraces a lively, activated waterfront. I also want to address the recommendation from the Hawthorne Reuse Committee to raise the building immediately. I believe that step would be premature. Replacing the building with a fenced-off crater at the entrance to our beloved town, potentially for three years or more, would be short-sighted. It would create unnecessary blight on one of our most visible pieces of property, and it would remove the opportunity for the community to use and enjoy the space in the meantime. A short-term activation is the smart and responsible path. It keeps the property vibrant instead of dormant. It allows the town the breathing room it needs to thoughtfully plan and fund whatever permanent vision comes next. And most importantly, it gives our residents and visitors a positive, engaging experience on our waterfront rather than a shuttered lot. I don't want to get into too many specifics of my proposal I look forward to presenting if it comes to fruition until the RFP is formally presented, but I can say this: I truly believe this interim solution can add value, energy, and pride to our town. It avoids unnecessary blight, it generates excitement instead of stagnation, and it lets us make the most of one of Swamp Scott's most iconic locations while long-term decisions are made. Thank you for your considerations.
Thank you. Okay. We have one more in.
Hello. Joe Dulett, Elmwood Road, Swamp Scott. Among other things, I'm the director of the Blue Big Band, which is Swamp Scott's Community Jazz Orchestra. It's a program of the Senior Center and our holiday concert. We are doing Duke Ellington's Nutcracker Suite on December 14th at 2:00 p.m. And who cares if it's right when the Patriots are playing the Bills, right? Come watch some Ellington. The members are community members. We've got 14 members now. It's a fantastic program. It's a short program. You'll be in and out of there in an hour, but just come support it. It's $10 free for youth and seniors. And if you want more info, go to bluebigband.com. Thank you. And there's cards in the back if you want to grab one.
Thank you, Joe. Diane, if you would allow Mr. Demento to speak, please?
Very good. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'd like to address the issue of the Hawthorne vitality situation. This has now gone on three years. We can't wait and have a six-year process to get this done. Somewhere or another, I believe this board has to find a way to greatly accelerate the process. And what this last speaker that went before me said is exactly what I fear. Everyone, who wouldn't want to rent the space for $2,000 a month? We've gotten $2,000 a month for three years, and that's it from the operation of that restaurant. We can't afford to fool around with this anymore with the tax situation in this town. We're facing an increase in taxes. We know it. We know we're going to lose some of that cap money this year because the town just can't beat its budget. I can't urge you enough to move quickly, adroitly. You had a study committee, you've had two. And finally, you have a recommendation before you, and I just don't think you can postpone, postpone. It's very bad for the town, and I beg you, do not put this off any longer. Get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demento. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing no additional public comment, we will move on to new and old business. We will, we are, we still open the public hearing?
I believe that we can. I think everyone is here.
Everyone's here?
Participating.
Okay. So, we will, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for discussion and possible vote to consider the approval of the transfer of ownership of an existing Section 15 off-premises, all alcohol license from Casseball LLC, 646 Humphrey Street, Unit D, Swamp Scott, to, I am going to butcher the pronunciation of this.
It's called Gananat.
Gananat Corporation. Doug is online, so we will have to vote, roll call. So, Mary Ellen?
Aye.
Kate, Doug?
Aye.
I am an aye. And you've all made the motion and seconded. So, we, the public hearing is now open. Where shall we start? Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Alex Boujwa. I work at Tamacas Law Office in Lynn, and I am representing the applicant. Also here on behalf of the applicant is Nidhabin Jay Patel, who's the proposed manager of record on the license, 35% shareholder, president and treasurer of the corporation, and Samir Kumar Patel, who's the 65% shareholder and secretary and director of the corporation. The applicant is purchasing all of the assets, including the liquor license of Casseball LLC, doing business as Swamp Scott Liquor is already said, located at 646 Humphrey Street, Unit D in Swamp Scott. The applicant is going to continue operating the business as it's currently operated, same name, location, products. The only thing we are requesting to be changed is the permitted hours business. We're looking to get the full hours permitted by the ABCC, which would be Monday through Saturday, 8 through 11, and then Sundays, 10 to 11. Currently, what's allowed is 9 to 10 on Monday through Saturday, and Sundays, 10 to 6. Nidhabin Jay Patel, the proposed manager of record, has experienced working in this type of store since 2021. She has a valid work permit. She's never had a violation. She's familiar with the ID scanners and ID laws. They will be using ID scanners in the store. She is TIP certified. And Samir Kumar Patel successfully runs another liquor store in Newburyport and is also familiar with ID laws, scanners as well. So, we are seeking approval of the license transfer, approval of Nidhabin Patel as manager of record, and approval of the change of hours.
Okay. Thank you. So, for consideration for us this evening, again, it's a transfer of license. It would be a change in hours and then a change in manager.
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicants?
Is this the one we just did recently?
Yeah, I believe, yep. You guys were just before us, right? Not you guys, but behind you.
This is just, was this just opened up?
Yes.
This is the one?
Anybody? You have any additional questions, Mary Ellen?
No. I don't have any additional questions. I mean-
From the town licensing perspective, have there been any issues with the current applicant?
No.
I mean, the current, sorry, the current license holder.
No. No issues, no outstanding fees or debts.
Okay.
The only issues there have been are requests to change the signage, because there's excessive signage.
And neon signs.
Neon signs, and then signs covering the windows, signs covering the ice cooler, but those were all changed as soon as it was addressed.
Okay. Great. So, if there are no additional questions, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the change of, transfer of ownership, the change in hours, and the change in manager.
I do have, what are the hours that we have in other liquor stores? Like, I'm not really, I mean, we did have resident, we had residents that were commenting that were really against this last time. Now it's changing hands within a few months. I'm really not, I don't think I'm really feeling great about extending the hours.
Was it, was there residents commenting against this, or was it the restaurant?
No. It was-
There were residents that were talking about deliveries.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if that was related to the restaurant in that plaza.
And selling liquor so close to the park, that, yeah. So, what, and the other question I have is, do we, is this supposed to come in front of us twice, or, no?
Because of the change in hours? Is that what you're asking?
No, because of the policy-
Our policy is generally something comes in front of us twice.
Okay.
Once to review, then once to approve. I mean, I think if there were direction for the applicants, that is probably helpful. So, if it is, you know, today we are interested in not having an issue with transferring the license, but we have an issue with the hours, and we have to come back and have a conversation about the hours, or-
Were residents sent letters about this change in ownership? Like, did residents have an opportunity to come down?
We did publish an ad in the local paper 10 days before the hearing and told them they could attend the hearing for the transfer.
Which is what they're required to do.
Which is what they're required to do under the law.
Right.
I will say, you know, the only thing that does give me pause is being open till 11. Nothing is really open till 11 in Swamp Scott. So, that does give me a little bit of a pause, but, you know, I certainly understand the interest in wanting to do that. I'm really curious about the change in the manager of record. Is that, was that just an administrative decision, or, because you guys were just here, right? I mean, it was-
Well, I think because of the change in ownership of the entity that's going to be holding the liquor license, the manager is changing so often, like-
Right. I just wondered why it was done so soon after starting out, if there was anything you wanted to volunteer about why.
Well, the seller is selling the business, so with the new, with the new business coming in, they have their own manager and their own employees that they're going to be using at the store.
Right. It was just very quick, right? So, they just opened not even a year ago, I think, so it just seems like it was a quick change.
Oh, I'm not sure about that business decision.
Yeah. Okay. Kate?
Could you come to the microphone? You're going to speak?
I can answer the question for that. I have a family situation that elderly have to be taken care, which is, that's why I took myself off, to take care of the elderly parent.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Appreciate the insight.
And I, if I could just add one more thing about the hours. The hours wouldn't be changing very much. The hours, Monday through Saturday, we're just looking to open one hour earlier and stay open one hour later on Monday through Saturday, and then on Sundays, we would just be open for a few extra hours. And I don't think the applicants plan on always being open all of those hours. I think with holidays, deliveries, different things like that, they like having the choice in just the most hours possible approved on their license and then being able to make the business decisions. But it wouldn't be a drastic change in the hours, if that helps.
Okay. Thank you. That does help. I don't have anything else. So, I would be inclined to say yes without the change in hours. I would rather get through a year and then readdress hours at that time. That's, that's my feelings on that.
Since this is a public hearing, we obviously need to entertain questions from the public too, so it looks like Mr. Demento's hand is up, so if you would authorize-
If you would put it down?
Unless it's up from prior.
Bill, you should be able to talk.
Thank you. My question is hours. I have no issue with the transfer of ownership or any of that. I understand anyone has a right to sell. But strange where the neighbors were so vocal at both the zoning board and the initial hearing that they're not there tonight. And I'm wondering if the statute requires them to be noticed by a letter, by mail, as to this. And I'd be a little reluctant to approve any hour changes unless you're absolutely sure the procedures were followed correctly. And what's the harm in waiting and finding out if the neighbors were properly notified? It's a little strange. They were pretty vocal relative to hours and what's going on. So, I just speak out in caution that there's no real hurry, and I think you should check it out as to the hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demento. I don't believe there's a requirement under the ABCC that they be mailed a notification within any sort of radius for these changes. I don't think we've ever done that prior, so that would be something new. Doug, did you have a comment?
Yeah. It does seem like a combination of what Mr. Demento said and what Mary Ellen said, that it would be reasonable to make sure, unless there's someone there that I can't see that can speak to exactly who got what notice, if it was just put in a local newspaper, I think we all know that that's probably not necessarily reaching that many people. So, I'd be interested to know definitively if there are any other requirements, but even if there aren't requirements, that, you know, that liquor store is situated very much in a neighborhood, and it would be good to ensure that people are very much aware of what's happening.
Yeah. I don't, I don't argue the conclusion, just the supposition, that they have to go forward with any additional conditions under the ABCC. I agree that we can certainly table the hours piece, and we can approve the transfer, and we could, this is always something that they could come forward to again after a little bit more understanding on our side, or upon renewal, I think. You guys can also request a change of hours.
Which is going to happen at our next meeting anyway.
Yeah. It's just around the corner.
And it helps everybody.
Yeah. So, let's, so I'm happy to make a motion to approve the transfer of ownership, and we'll table the hours discussion.
And the change of manager.
And the change of manager until, yeah.
Okay. So, the motion on the table right now is to approve the transfer and the manager change and to, not to approve the hours right now, to sort of see how it all settles. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And because we are, again, remote, Doug, do you want to go ahead and vote for us?
Aye.
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 And I'm also an aye. You guys are ayes also, just to be clear?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Okay. Great. So, we have just approved the transfer, thank you, and the change of management. Then next step will be go to, I think it goes forward to the ABCC, and then we'd be happy to consider the hours at another time, but not tonight. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have to close the public hearing, so I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Doug?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for dying. Thank you. If I could just ask, Nick, if you wouldn't mind, just seeing what the hours are for the rest of the liquor stores in town for the next, when they come back, just to see if there's some more, so we know.
Are the liquor licenses, will they be, will be on the next agenda, or the next, one of the next two agendas?
We have them on the draft for the third, but they could need a final meeting of the year.
Okay. So, I think because we'd like probably to see them twice, potentially, we'll put them on the third, and then-
We also need an adjustment, don't we need, we need an adjustment on liquor licenses for the holidays?
Again? Sorry, I'm distracted by what's happening in the audience.
You're talking about the one-day liquor licenses, right? Between New Year's Eve and New Year's Day?
No.
Oh, sorry. What are you talking about?
Talking about the hours, there are, there are restaurants that have liquor licenses where they have to adjust their hours for New Year's, for Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. In the past, we've made adjustments on specific days, like those two days.
Correct. And Mazi's been away, which is why we haven't done it. We're going to do it on the third.
Okay.
She and I have been talking about that, because there is a fine, there's like-
It's a window.
-two minutes between the license.
Okay.
I don't understand it fully, but-
All right. Well, we will understand it fully next-
We'll understand it fully.
I just don't want to, I have to be called to another meeting.
I agree. So, let's ensure that that's on the third, so we can review. Okay. Moving on to update and discussion on the town's financial forecasts and anticipated revenue and expenditures.
Sure you're all waiting with bated breath for this.
Can't wait. Excited.
Yes. Absolutely.
Patrick, thanks for joining us again.
I wasn't going to let him get away when there might be questions that I would have to answer for. I asked him to be remote, and he came, so.
Kudos.
Got to thank him for that. What's wrong with it? Cut off?
I think so.
It is, in the printout.
I'll just look at the screen. It's okay.
I know. Okay. We can just go to the second slide. So, this slide is meant to level set. I'm not going to read this off to you. I have some words to say, but it's a level set on the financial policies that we're working within as we are creating these preliminary projections that we're presenting tonight. The idea here is that we're delivering this information to you as directed by the charter, although I will acknowledge we are four days late, and we will endeavor to be ahead of schedule in everything next year and for the rest of this budget season. But we're, we are ahead of where it was last year for a number of reasons. The idea is that we want to provide you with the snapshot today. It's informed by our assumptions and our expectations, but it's just the initial early look. We provide you with this information to review and to ask questions, and I'll do my best to answer- And I'll do my best to answer tonight along with Patrick. And if necessary, we'll get any further information we need from the team for you all. I then would hope to work with Katie to be on the agenda in the second meeting in December so that we can get some feedback at that point after you've had some time with this. And at that point, I'd love to hear from you all about the goals and priorities and objectives that you have as it relates to the budget and sort of where we've given you this, this snapshot. The second meeting that I'm discussing here is where the staff side can learn and get further information and guardrails so that as we're digging in to really have these deeper discussions with department heads, that it's reflecting the, the initial feedback from you all, so that we're sort of each working hand in hand towards the goals that we would like early in '26. So I don't want to read this all to you, but it's, the financial policies focus a lot on revenue as opposed to expenditure. It's making sure that we're conservative and realistic about how we plan. And then if things turned out more optimistically, it ends up being a question for us to, to find new ways to, to, you know, use those resources. But these are just some of the highlights. The local receipts, we don't exceed 90, 90% of the year prior grant revenue. We don't build around, we're trying to determine how sustainable it is. And then obviously, the, the top one is the big one. We focus at this early stage on the 2% per year plus, you know, $425,000 of new growth. We are over that for the five-year average, but we still cap it at 425. So again, we're being conservative and thoughtful about, you know, how we plan at this early stage. Can we go to the next slide? Actually, I think it's the fourth. We can just go, the next one, just to... Yes. So this is, again, a snapshot so that everyone is on the same page. This is the maximum allowable levy with Prop. 2 and 1/2. It is not how we build the budget, but I want to make sure everyone sees it. I know, looking back over time, this has always been part of the presentation so that folks can understand where we are versus where we, what we used to plan. This shows the 2 and 1/2% growth, I mean, 2 and 1/2% increase in the property tax. Again, it caps at 425 new growth. And it includes, obviously, the debt exclusions, which go into the maximum, maximum allowable levy because they have been voted on by the community. And over time, we're paying those down because those are priorities that, you know, the community decided to fund. We can go on to the next one. So this is, yeah, that's right. This is the projection based on the policy. It's the 2% increase in property taxes plus 425 in new growth. And as you can see, the number is a bit lower, but it's important that we follow the policies as we begin this effort in the projection and planning. And so as you can see, on the bottom right, that is the estimated excess levy capacity at the very bottom right. And above that is the 2% plus new growth are the levy number for, that we're working from. We can go on to the next slide. So at this point in this early stage, as I said, we want to be very conservative. This slide is what we're planning for state aid, which is flat. There's a number of factors that are coming into play, both at the state and federal level, that we think means the flat assumption makes sense and is worthwhile. Number one, at the state level, there's a hiring freeze and they're talking about incentives to separate employees, whether early retirement or just to separate. And then when we get to the federal level, which obviously funds a significant portion of state government and by extension us, it's very hard for us to forecast that there will be increases of any kind or to understand exactly where that's going to land. So we're just carrying forward a flat number with the hopes that we do get that. And again, this will be a discussion if that were to change when the governor's budget and the legislature acts, which is something legislature usually wouldn't be acting until April. But we would have a better sense of that when we're getting into the discussions in February and March. But right now, we're keeping it flat so that we don't build off an assumption that something might be there when there's really nothing that we can look at that would make us anticipate that it will be there as of right now. So just wanted to, again, highlight how we're getting to where we are. Can we go to the next slide? I know this is tiny on the screen. It's easier probably for people at home to see this. But again, local receipts is, you know, as with other revenue, there are financial policies around what we can plan for and what we do plan for, so that we are not being overly optimistic and looking through rose-colored glasses. You know, running down the list here, as you can see, is there a technical problem?
Well, two people have raised hands, so I'm wondering if there is a technical...
Can we go to the teams just to see if there's a technical issue? Can they not see it?
Yeah, the slides are, the slides are showing online.
Okay. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Could we try to share again, Diane?
Yep.
It would be that, yeah, second one there. Doug, does that, can you see that any better?
Yes.
Okay, great. Diane, if you wouldn't, yep. Perfect.
Okay. So with local receipts, as with the others, we're looking at conservative projections that are percentages of prior years or averages. We're not trying to be overly optimistic to look at any particular local receipt and say that, you know, we can build a, a budget strongly around that. You know, there's different things that you can highlight. The building department, as an example, is doing well this year. The, you know, over time, we, again, don't want to build a budget over something that is higher than that. I cannot see either.
What are you looking for?
I just wanted to see if there are any other ones that I should highlight other than that. But in, in reality, we're, we're planning a budget around things that are 85 and 90% of prior year budget or their historic actuals averaged over three to five years. Can we go to the next slide, Diane? Because this is really the one that we'll want to talk about, probably. Keep going. So here, looking at the estimated expenditures, which is part of what is requested by charter and has not always historically been presented at this time, but I wanted to make sure that we have this in front of folks now so that we could have a thoughtful discussion. I want to caution as we review this that this is a first pass. We're not yet at the point where we've gotten guidance from you all and others in the community about level service versus level funding versus priorities. So we're starting at a point to, to prompt the discussion. I know that the teams on, with both the town and the school are very cognizant of the limited resources we have available. We're, we're looking at this projection to include things like salary reserves, but they are projections. And, and those sit in general government because we have a number of open contracts with ongoing negotiations. It also includes salaries intended to support the town hall resources across finance assessing and town clerk that we've discussed over time. So that's also in there now and, again, open to discussion. As you can see in the bottom right, there is a projected deficit. And it is, I want to caution, it's a projection. We will continue to refine this as we go forward through this discussion and through our discussions with the department heads. This is our best informed estimate of where we are today as we look at this as a snapshot. I want to acknowledge that there's open contracts. There's a solid waste contract that is expiring at the end of the year and healthcare costs that we can only estimate right now. Healthcare is an example. We have not yet gotten any guidance from GIC. It has historically happened that they've provided a range in December, but we may or may not get that information in December. It might be later in the year, later in 2026, when they actually provide what the number will be. As we get better information in each of these lines, we will continue to refine this as we go. This, as I, as I said, this is a living document, is a snapshot, but for Patrick and I, it will be a living document as we're having discussions with department heads. We're hearing about priorities, goals, and objectives from you all. And we're getting more certainty around contracts that are open, both for services and for employees. I hope this is a good jumping off point. I apologize for those that, at home, that didn't see the first slides. I'm happy to talk to anyone that's interested at the office as well. I just want to put that out there. It's open doors, I've said. But I'm also happy to take questions tonight and hope that I'll be able to answer them or lean on Patrick to get a little more color if I'm not able to directly.
So let me just say what everybody is probably thinking. The way I'm looking at this right now, it says a projected deficit of $2 million, right?
Correct.
Okay.
2.3.
Thank you. Wanted to make sure I could actually see.
And to highlight, healthcare, we are carrying a number, but it could be not optimal. You know, we could be too optimistic. I don't think, I think we're going to be relatively close. There are open contracts across public safety and town hall. And the solid waste collection is one that, you know, I think we've traditionally been in the 3% to 5% range. You know, I think what other communities are seeing are up to 8% in increased costs in solid waste. The solid waste advisory committee is doing a very deep dive on both what we want, what we would like to have, what we need, and the best ways to save money. And one of the things that's been discussed, I know, I haven't been in those meetings every week in the last two weeks, but prior, it was, you know, even do we look at extending for one year at a, as small an increase as possible so that we can fully vet out any and all options? But those are significant drivers that will be sort of, you know, they'll have to be built in and they're not entirely under our control where they land. So I want to just highlight those. But yes, it does show a deficit of 2.3.
So Nick, would you characterize this as generally, not only on the revenue side, but also on the expense side, as you're taking a conservative approach in each of those areas?
So revenue side is conservative, yes. This, I want to make sure that we're both using conservative the same way. This is, I don't think...
You're assuming, you're assuming higher increases than you would really expect at this point?
No. I don't think that I'm being as conservative as I could be in that regard. I think on the operations, the salary and expense lines, where we can, we are, you know, sort of holding the line that has been held repeatedly for percentage increases. The general government, as I said, is where, for now, we hold salary reserves. So that's one that is bigger. But in addition to that, as I cautioned over time when we discussed sort of market adjustment for senior-level staff that we need to bring on, my, you know, sort of visceral reaction to asking you all for support of that is, it means that my baseline in maintenance will be higher than it has been historically. So there's, it, it is not the most conservative if you're saying, you know, the most realistic and only option. I think we're being aggressive in a way that we can work very hard to meet in many of these lines, but there are some significant drivers that we don't have control over, particularly the three that I mentioned, that could have a significant impact depending on where they land.
Nick, just a quick question on culture and recreation. Culture would be library. Recreation historically has sat outside of the general fund in a revolving account, at least for, for salary, correct?
For salary?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So...
They still have a line item in the budget, though.
Yeah. We have, there's still a line item in the budget.
For...
Life, lifeguards and other activities that the entire town uses.
Got it. Got it. Okay.
It's a, it's a small number.
Okay. Okay. So I, I just, I, I just wanted to make sure that that was, that that was allocated properly and I, I just, I just don't have that detail, so...
Patrick, could you help highlight what falls under that for me, please? I apologize.
Yep. So the culture and recreation category includes the library department salary and expense, and it includes salaries for lifeguards and certain expenditures of the rec department that are outside rec revolving, such as Fourth of July, lifeguard supplies, community events that are funded through the general fund.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick, what, as far as investment income, you have that dropping down?
That's a...
On the prior side?
Yeah. Do you want, that's in the revenue, right? Our local receipts?
Local receipts. So you can go to local receipts. I have a couple of questions in that category.
That's the impact of the market and interest rates in general. Is that correct, Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
And miscellaneous recurring? Actually, I don't care about that. Miscellaneous non-recurring?
You mean what has sat in there in the past, under the historics?
What's the, what's the detail on that?
I can speak for FY '25, which is the most recent actual on the report. There's $1 million in there that we received from National Grid related to energy incentives for the new school. Obviously, in the context of the forecast, we don't assume any miscellaneous revenues for forecasting because they're not guaranteed.
Right. So I, you know, on that money, on the National Grid money, I know we really didn't want to be counting that money because we wanted that money invested back into infrastructure so we could get additional, additional grants. But last year, because of the major FUPA on $440,000 not being accounted for, we had to put, we had to use that money to balance out. So what is left as far as what's coming in from National Grid, do you know?
I don't have an exact amount because I don't believe we have an exact amount from National Grid.
Okay.
That's something that Max coordinates with them on. I believe there's some additional incentives that will be expected, but I don't have timing or amounts.
Okay.
From him.
All right.
Just to stick on that, I think we had this conversation a meeting or two ago. So that million miscellaneous non-recurring, that is the National Grid money?
Yes. There are some other smaller items in there, but that would be the notable item I would call out.
So I thought, for some reason, when I, I remember reading this, I thought we had about 2 and 1/2 million coming in for that, and it was staggered. It was, we got some last year and some this year. And the only way to continue to get any additional money was to, to reinvest into infrastructure like solar and things like that for National Grid. But I, I do remember that there was money coming after the initial money that we brought in this year. So if we could just look that up for a later time?
And circle back with Max on what he has in the hover for energy incentives.
Okay.
Yeah. Remember, Mary Ellen, I think there were different category stuffs. Some was National Grid and some were other, other incentive programs.
There were two. Yeah.
Yes.
Yep. There were two categories. One had to be used for school debt and the other had to be used, could be used for anything we wanted. But in our conversations, it was to use it for infrastructure, to keep investing, you know, in infrastructure, specifically around the schools and making them more energy efficient.
We'll talk to Max.
Yep. Just get those dollars.
Do you want to go back to the last slide again? Thanks. Now, can we just, do we have any other questions on that? Can you go to the expenditures one? Thank you. I didn't know if you all were done asking questions about this because we had bounced around.
I just have a question on debt service. So on debt service, that's, you have the debt service pretty much in this flat from your '25 actual to your '26 budgeted. Can you send us, or can you circle back later and just give us a table of roll-offs?
I can. Can I just assure everybody that the number for debt service is pretty solid because it's based on, you know, an itemized forecast of debt based on the five-year plan that was presented to town meeting? And so I feel pretty good about that number, but I'll caveat that we'll update that as we progress through capital plan updates ahead of, you know, having to finalize this budget. But that's the best number we have right now.
Can you repeat again for us what your steps will be going forward on the budget timeline now?
Yeah. Can you go to the last slide now?
Oh, is that, am I teeing you up?
Yeah, thank you.
Great.
So as I said, we'll, we'll be working with department heads in December and January, but we'll also, you know, as I said, we would love to come back before you for that last meeting of the calendar year. We get just initial broad feedback, goals, priorities, objectives, because that will because that will inform the discussions we have, level service versus level funding, you know, things like that. A meeting with FinCom, obviously, as I said, tomorrow. CIC also is going to kick off in a more intense way soon. But we will put together the preliminary budget for the end of January. The school department, we anticipate being complete with their effort in February, and we would be before you several times between now and then, both for feedback and presentations on where we stand i- in the process. I would absolutely plan to come before you with a separate agenda item, not just in the TA report, as we get more information specifically about those large drivers that I mentioned, because those are things that I want to share with you all as soon as we have them.
And this is based on 2%, not two and a half?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, it's all, which is within the financial policies. We are, we're working within the policies that are in place. And so this is, again, it's a snapshot right now. There's some things that are still out there that are not insignificant, but as we get more information on those, I will share it with you as soon as I can so that we can continue to make informed decisions and you can provide informed feedback to us. So what we come to you matches as best as possible your goals, priorities, and objectives throughout. I would anticipate, as I said, I'll be before you with information about this, or I'll be asking you more than once over time, in addition to any update that I get to those significant drivers. Does that answer your question?
It does. I think one of the things I am cognizant of, given last year's budget process, is we, we sort of talked about an idea of maybe having, you know, department heads be more present alongside us as we understand some of the items in the budget. I don't know if that really is something that will come to fruition this year, how you see it playing out. You just want to take the information and present it to us as, you know, the TA's budget and move on from there. Or, you know, in years past, there were, I think prior to Sean, there were budget conversations where department heads would come in and sort of.
Yeah. Yeah, I would be happy, I'd be happy to spend time in January with that after we've had the initial internal discussions where we come and talk through where we are. And again, that, for me, that needs to be informed by some feedback in advance from you all so that we are focused, and I'm using these two because they're sort of big picture. It's not the only feedback I'm looking for, but level service versus level funding are two very different things as an example. But we would want to know which, which direction you want to be pointing us in so that we can be responsive to that, and then I would be happy to have department heads come in whether we choose to have sort of the great big department head night. I'll look at how you've done it in the past. I'm not familiar with the, the customs and how it's been done here, but I'm happy to make sure that they are involved and they are answering the questions as well because it's, it's a recommendation that comes from all of our hard work together, from me ultimately to you all. And then the vote that you take is, you know, to put something before town meeting. So, yeah, I'm happy to bring department heads and others before you all, and I'd be happy to work with you and others individually to make sure that it's the right folks and it's not just, you know, police, fire, DPW, but we'll make sure everyone gets in front of you at some point.
Yeah, I mean, I just, looking for feedback from the board, if that is the direction we're asking Nick to go in, or if.
I think that's the most collaborative way to go about it, and it really gives us an understanding of what, you know, as opposed to just reading lines, items on a budget, we're understanding from those department heads what's important, what's critical, what might be a nice to have, what might not be, right? And really hearing it from the people that do the work every day.
Right.
Certainly helpful.
If we were to go to talk to them with just this, and this is all we, all the discussion, there would be no expansion, no, you know, it's making sure you fit within what we have. So if you all have questions from particular departments about any particular expansion, things that you've heard out, heard about from the community, things that someone had suggested we've wanted over time, I think that would give us, you know, that would be a great forum to have those questions, and it's not, again, not just myself and the folks in finance answering. It's, it's the ones that are doing the work in an individual department.
Absolutely. That's a great approach.
I think it's hard to just, I mean, obviously, we are each going to give direction. You know, you're looking level set versus level funded. There's exceptions to, to any of that, right? You say like, okay, obviously, we want to be level funded, but then we have these carve-outs, right? Or vice versa. So it would be more collaborative, I agree, to have that conversation well in advance so we're able to fix all the issues before we get to a point where we can't.
And, and my, my goal in doing, asking for that feedback in December is so that when we're doing the initial internal discussions, we're just aligned. It's not that, to your point, everyone is going to be exactly set to, to one guardrail.
Right.
We'll tell you what it looks like for each, each department. The department head will be here to talk about it with you all, and that way we understand the impacts of any, any decision, but what we're putting together is responsive and aligned with what you all share after you've had a little, little bit of time to look at this. And obviously, if you have other questions, I'm happy to answer them after tonight as well, in advance of that second meeting in December.
Great.
It's a great approach.
Doug, did you have something?
Well, I, I think the next item on the agenda, you know, is, adds further context to all of this too in terms of what the tax rate increase is looking like. So, you know, it will kind of play out as we get more information.
Great, okay.
Thanks, Doug. All right, moving on to item number three on the agenda, update and discussion of upcoming TOR filings related to fiscal year 2026 classification hearing. This is a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors. So do you all have to call your meeting to order?
Well, Charlie is on his way. He was at a Housing Authority meeting.
Okay.
So I, I think we can begin the discussion and then.
Then you can call it to order.
Call it to order and go from there.
Okay.
You know, I just have a quick question before we start. Has, has the Board of Assessors reviewed these numbers?
We just.
They just got them today.
You just got them today?
Yeah.
And who do you get them from?
Patriot Property.
Okay.
And so if I may, just before Paul gets started, we wanted to get in front of you all to share this information, knowing that it's coming late from Patriot Property and we're trying to get everything together. We wanted to make sure that this was an opportunity to talk, and Paul can go into greater detail about the numbers where they are, so that questions can be asked. We can get answers both tonight and over time, but we didn't want to push this to December as the first time you hear about any of this, but we will have to come back to do the final classification hearing. This is to make sure you have some information and we were not just delaying the sharing of information as well.
Right, it just seems like every year, there seems to be an issue with Patriot Property delivering information in a timely manner, so, and we're being shown numbers prior to the Board of Assessors even seeing numbers.
Well, and I'll finish with Patriot Properties. It wasn't all them. I took on more than I probably should have this year trying to get things looked at, which took me a lot longer than I ever possibly anticipated. So moving forward to next year, it's going to be a little bit different ballgame in how I proceed and then how we work with Patriot Properties as well.
Can you, could you elaborate on that, on that process?
Yeah, I mean, when I started last year, it was kind of the middle of everything. We worked on exemptions, got through that, got through abatement season, and then there were issues that came up that I felt needed to be reviewed. And there were two neighborhoods specifically, and that was the oceanfront neighborhoods. And so I looked at each and every one of those properties individually. I looked at flyovers, I looked at MLS, I looked building permits, deeds, plans, everything. And in the process, I found things that needed to be corrected and rectified and kind of move on from there. The oceanfront neighborhoods, I think, are the most complicated neighborhoods in Swamp Scott. So as I tried to review further, as we kind of move in town with some of the other neighborhoods, then hopefully, things will get a little bit smoother. I certainly did not anticipate that things were going to be as complicated as they are. Swamp Scott is a very complex town, and so that makes it a little bit more complicated. And so, you know, trying to get forward and, you know, again, with 15 hours a week, you know, it is a lot there. So hoping that things will kind of smooth out a little bit. But yeah, there'll be a different format moving forward. What I'm finding is that after five years, some things have changed. Some things have changed with the Department of Revenue. And for me, it's been a little bit more of a, trying to remember how I did things five years ago, before I retired, in setting values and everything else. So, you know, from my perspective, we did things a little bit backwards, but we, with the help of Patriot, we're kind of, you know, set to move forward in, in hopefully a better direction.
I have a couple of questions. How many neighborhoods do we have in Swamp Scott?
Offhand, I, I don't know. I would probably venture, and you're talking single-family neighborhoods. Probably about a dozen, I think.
Yeah, I think there's more.
Probably more, yeah.
Probably just right around 20.
So you have 20 neighborhoods, and then you decided to look at two neighborhoods and what, like, bring them up to where they.
Well, again, we're looking for, for issues. The thing that I'm most concerned with is consistency and some uniformity within the neighborhoods, within the building styles, and, you know, grades, et cetera. And so I think that's an important step to take to get things a little bit more in balance with neighborhoods, the way homes are looked at and assessed. Once things are a little bit more in balance somewhere down in the future, then things should be a little bit easier when you're looking at, you know, doing your sales and trying to determine what needs to be done, what needs to be adjusted. But right now, is, some of it's a little bit of a hodgepodge. And some things just really go back decades, and I don't, you know, I think some things just haven't been looked at. So, you know, fortunately, you know, with Patriot there, you know, they, I can rely on them for a second pair of eyes to, so that we can move forward.
So the concern that I have is, did we take two neighborhoods and the waterfront neighborhood and whatever other neighborhood and adjust them to make them right? And meanwhile, there's another 18 neighborhoods out there that aren't just adjusted.
Well, there's one of me in 15 hours.
Let me finish. Does that mean that there's another 18 neighborhoods out there that are going to reap the benefit of these two? So my concerns are inequity, inequity. And I do know that the past town administrator did look at waterfront within the first couple of years, and I, I think my concerns are, do we immediately go to waterfront and make adjustments? And how does the whole town, because as assessors, you're really not setting a tax rate, you're setting the fairness of taxes. So as assessors, do we really have a town fairness? Or are we just identifying two, two neighborhoods out of 20? That's where my, my concerns really are.
The two neighborhoods were waterfront neighborhoods, and that consisted of 140 homes. The next neighborhood I would like to look at would be, the next one would be ocean, very good neighborhood. Those are the people right behind the oceanfront properties. And I think there's probably under 200 of those homes as well. This problem has been there for a long time. Again, with the turnover of assessors every year or so, it hasn't helped. You know, you, you want fairness and equity, but to get fairness and equity, you have to start reviewing things and looking at things. And that's a process. It's not going to happen in one year, it's not going to happen in a few months. I told my board, you're probably looking at three to five years.
So I, I want to just say.
And that's with probably, probably working full-time, not 15 hours a week.
So I just want to say, you've, you've been there a year now, right? Is that?
Yeah, surprising to me, yes.
And I thank you for that because there is a, there was a, you were put into a situation of great difficulty, right? And very much understaffed. And as you say, to your point, working for 15 hours a week, you can't fix everything in 10 minutes, right? So I appreciate the, the time you're putting in and looking at it systematically. And I'm thinking, from what you're saying, you've tackled two neighborhoods and you're progressively going to get to the rest, right? But you've got to start somewhere, right? And that's kind of your approach is you've.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. This is why when I first came in, what I started telling everybody is you need a full-time assessor.
Absolutely.
I mean.
Remember that.
There are, there have been missed opportunities for this town. Missed opportunities probably with more growth and getting things a little bit more balanced and uniform and consistent.
Yep.
And again, you know, it, it's very difficult to try to pick up the pieces.
Yep.
Yes, am I going to step on toes in the process? Absolutely.
Yeah.
Is it going to be some pain involved in trying to get things rectified? Of course there will be.
Sure. But I appreciate the undertaking because I know it's not small and.
And we weren't just picking on ocean.
Of course, yeah, I know.
It's just.
A systematic approach, yeah.
We've had six assessors in 10 years and.
Right.
Six different people, and two years we didn't have anyone, and.
Completely understandable.
There's a lot that needs to be fixed, and Paul's doing a great job, and it's going to take time, but.
Absolutely. I agree.
Through the sales review process, yes, we are looking at, we have made changes in town. Some of the neighborhood land values have come up. And again, we're looking at, at things as they come along. And one of the things we, Patriot and I looked at and talked about were some of the table changes for billing style because those were, you know, I had some old styles, which were calculated at a higher cost per square foot than Colonials, Antiques, or Contemporarys. And in town, we do have a lot of Colonials and certainly Antiques, and God knows, you have a lot of Contemporarys.
True. And I, I mean, I really do want to understand, I want everyone to understand the difficulty in filling this position, right? Let's understand there's not a whole, you know, it's like needle in a haystack, finding an experienced assessor to get in and do the work, right? That you've been undertaking, which is a mountain of work. And in, in the very beginning, you said that, you know?
Yeah.
I can't do it by myself for 15 hours a week, so thank you for your diligence and.
I'd like to think that I'm looking, trying to get the town's best interest.
Of course, yeah.
And I have lots of ideas on how things should be, have, could be done, but again, you know.
We need to help you.
I can't bite off more than I can chew. I mean, there are things that I'd like to see done probably more quicker.
Sure.
Than not, but I realize that I simply can't do it.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate that. I appreciate your honesty as well.
So, so Paul, if we, you know, when we hire a full-time assessor, how much more rapidly can this process progress? Instead of it being two neighbor, two of 20 neighborhoods, let's say, someone full-time comes in and within 12 months, where, where, where should we be? Just given the fact that you're, you've been in the seat for, you know, for, for a year now.
How long will it take us to go?
How long will it take us to, to, to?
Again, I'd still maintain three to five years. I was in Western for almost 25 years. When I took the job, I saw that there were lots of inequities in, in little neighborhoods and all over the place. With a full-time staff, working full-time, a full-time assessor, three admin people in my office, it still took me three years.
Yeah.
To go through each neighborhood, land values, rectify some neighborhoods, look at building grades and cost tables and everything else. Once all that's kind of in place, I don't want to say you're on autopilot, but then it's a little easier to, to look at your, your sales and see what, what's going on and where you need to go. In single families, and you have a lot of two families in town, condos are a little bit different animal because every time a new condo is created, it creates its own neighborhood. Even if it's just a condex, right? And so those sale prices will immediately tell you where things are going. Single families, you have much different neighborhoods. And I would probably venture the guess that even in one neighborhood, you might see a differential, a difference in probably building grades in how those resales and sales take place. And that can happen as well. So I know that there are parts of town that are, you know, more F1 than other parts of town, which are a little more blue collar. And so, but again, even with some of the two families I've seen, even on the same street where they were converted to condos, that on the resales, on the same street, we have this, right? Because resale is not to tell you what's really happening in the market. And to the extent the property may have been renovated or not renovated. And, you know, again, and we're coming into some very uncertain times with the economy and the market. So there's no projecting what'll happen in the future. My only goal, you know, whether values go up, down, it doesn't matter to me. I just want to get some consistency and uniformity.
Yeah.
So that the town can move forward, whoever is here is a full-time assessor.
Right. That makes sense.
So two things. One, I just, sorry, Doug, go ahead.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna, well, number one, Charlie's here, so we can open there.
We did.
You did?
Yeah.
In secret.
Well, not in secret.
I think the other thing that I would just like to say is, this is not the first time we've heard any of this information. This is maybe the first time we heard, we only made it to two neighborhoods, and those two neighborhoods were X. But Charlie, you've been to our meeting how many times and discussed necessary, the necessity for a full-time assessor? We've heard it not just from you, but from others, from Paul, from Nick, and Nick's only been here how long? We've heard it. So this will be a consistent issue until we solve that problem because we just, there just are not enough hours for you to get the baseline back to where it needs to be for us to have that equity and consistency. It's just not, it's not viable.
I'd like to add, I probably did something that maybe has never been done in town. I sent out impact letters to all the oceanfront people that, yes, we are looking, yes, they may go up, down, or they, maybe they'll stay about the same, you know, but as the review process goes through. The review, part of the review process is when I'm, if I come out and I look at a house for an abatement or somebody wants me to go out and look at a house, you're trying to get the information correct, which reestablishes what that base value would be. And then once that's there, then we start looking at sales, and then we need to see where that's going to go. I've had a lot of condos that have come down in value, and some have gone up, some stay the same. Same with some of the single families and some of the neighborhoods. So again, you know, it, it's a process in that will, you know, that's always changing.
All right, so why don't we move on to the presentation, if you don't mind? All right, so why don't we move on to the presentation, if you don't mind?
Katie?
Yes, Doug.
I got a question.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not sure if this is covering the presentation, but I, I want to go, sorry, a little bit back to what Mary Ellen was asking. Paul, can you just try to state as, as simply for layman's terms as possible, what led you to choose certain neighborhoods? Like, did you have certain data that indicated that they were out of whack? I, I'm just trying to get a sense of like, why out of all the neighborhoods, you chose the ones you did?
Well, a lot of it stemmed from some complaints, because what some, I was hearing, and after doing an initial review, I agree with the person, that his home was graded in value to X amount of dollars.
Wow.
And yet, he had neighbors which, which had newer construction of similar quality, but were valued lower. And again, so my perspective is, it's not enough to look at his home and two or three of his neighbors. I decided to look at literally the entire neighborhood. And I felt that if I hadn't done that, then I really wouldn't be doing my job, or, you know, doing my job to the way I thought that it should be done. So, yes, sometimes a complaint will kind of-
Trigger.
-kind of kickstart something. And again, you know, being a complicated neighborhood, it wasn't the most pleasant thing to do. There was a lot of time involved in looking at this. There were some properties because of looking at permits, some building plans, re-sketching properties, a ton of review work. There were times where it would take me two or three hours just to review one property. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but, you know, sometimes, you know-
Yeah, no, I was just curious, because I didn't know if there was some way in which you had, I assume you can't really know this until you actually get in and evaluate them, but if there was any way or reasoning that you would be able to have a sense of which neighborhoods are the most, you know, over or under assessed, you know, even before you get there? If there's general trends that lead you to have that, you know, kind of hunch to begin with?
Yeah, what, what I find, and sometimes I'm just looking at a property, doesn't matter what part of town, I, I see things that, that, that flash to me, and, and signals that, eh, maybe there's something that needs to be looked at, it might be a problem here. And then it's not just looking at that one property. What I've done is I'll run a report to see potentially how many other properties might be affected the same way. And again, so that spurs one thing, and then it becomes many. So, again, you know, I would like to continue looking at the neighborhoods as, you know, moving forward, and then trying to establish that. I think that as I move and progress inward, that some of the neighborhoods will start to become a little bit easier to look at. Some of the more affluent neighborhoods, I mean, we're not talking cookie cutter homes. We're talking, you know, lots of different, you know, grades and, and, you know, sale prices and everything else. So, the, the idea is as we move inward towards town and, and probably towards the line, that things will start to smoothen out and be a little easier to look at.
I have a quick question. When somebody pulls, pulls a building permit and they're finished with their work, I don't know who would know the incentives, do, does the building inspector have to go in and do an occupancy?
The building inspector does his occupancy permit. What I would like to do, and one of the things I would like to propose, now whether it's feasible for me to do it, I don't know, is that what I implemented in Westwood when I started, we started working with the building inspector's office. And the assessment's office became part of the signing off process for an occupancy permit. And what that means is that a builder or homeowner, they would do an extensive renovations, new construction, addition, whatever it was, before the building inspector released the occupancy permit, they had to come to my department first, and we did the inspection. And again, the idea here is that we walk in the door, that we're trying to get the information as accurate as poss, as possible, so that we can assess it correctly. Once we did our job, then all the other permitting for plumbing, electrical, everybody's in line, and everybody signed off. At that point, then the building commissioner would, would issue the occupancy permit. The thing with doing permit inspections after the fact is, is the odds of getting it to a home afterwards are basically nil. So, we're looking at, you know, there's a lot of information with the building department. And I've utilized OpenGov a lot.
Don't we have, do we have soft, software that comes into the building inspector, and doesn't that software also go to your office?
It doesn't come to my office, I have access to it.
Okay.
And so, what I do from there is like, you know, if Patriot's going to do data entry to enter the permit information, I run a report from them. But what I've done is, is when I'm, have looked at neighborhoods of any house, basically, is, is I'm looking at building permits. And where I can't find anything more recent, because I'm not sure how far back OpenGov does, does go, I'll ask for any archived information, and I've looked at those as well. And in the process, I've actually saved all this stuff in a separate folder on my desktop. So, there I would find building plans, and then I kind of review the building plans to the sketch that I'm looking at. And if things look like they match, great. If they look like they might be off, then I may go in and alter the sketch, or I'll just delete it and start the sketch all over again. But again, when you start looking at a, you know, four, five, six, eight thousand square foot house, not, not easy to do. It's, it's very time-consuming. But OpenGov, there's a lot of information there, a lot. And also, I don't look just at the plum, at, it's building permits, I looked at plumbing and electrical as well. No stone unturned.
Lot of information, appreciate the backdrop, but we will, I think, move on to the presentation, if you don't mind.
So, to start, I just wanted to make sure that we all know that these are basically proposed numbers that I'm looking at. Once the board issues and I have signatures, it'll be submitted to Department of Revenue, at which point they will review the information, and then we'll, we'll wait for their review and certification.
Excuse me, Paul, one second. Doug, can you see the slides through Teams?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, sorry.
So, right now, as we stand now, that the total taxable value in town is, is well over $5 billion. That's an increase above 4% from FY '25. So, this is where we are, is looking at all the neighborhoods, single families, condos, everything else, any increase in value. So, there has been an increase in value from last year on the grand total of about 4%.
Does that include any of our, does that also include the elementary school?
Pardon?
Does that include the elementary school?
The elementary school is an exempt property, so that is not taxable.
Okay.
I mean, there are, there is a value for exempt properties, which we do account for every year with the Department of Revenue.
Is it taxable? I'm just thinking of asset. Okay.
New growth this year, the number here that you see of, of $41 million in growth value, when I first looked at it, the numbers were coming in, and I looked at whole odd numbers. What I didn't do, and it was to, I have to account for or remove any abatements that were done this year, which would alter that growth value. So, right now, what would be, I'm looking at proposing to the Department of Revenue is probably about $38 million plus in, in new growth value. That would transfer, if everything is approved, of about $492,000 in growth revenue. $491,497, assuming everything gets approved and certified. So, that's an increase from last year of about, you know, about 22% from last year's growth value, growth revenue, which was around $400,000. So, how we look at growth is, you know, we kind of look at, we are looking at building permits, MLS, any information, any changes in a property that we're now assessing that we hadn't assessed in the past constitutes new growth. So, right now, you know, Patrick's still doing his thing, the estimated levy that I took is kind of what's currently showing with the Department of Revenue in part of the recap, so again, for illustrative purposes, we're going to go with that number. So, the proposed single tax rate based on a $65 million levy against the $5 billion taxable value of properties in town is $13.01. So, historically, Swamp Scott has shifted to the full max on commercial, industrial, personal property. And so, we're also looking at the minimum residential factor. So, assuming that the board will be doing the same thing, and I can't imagine that you won't, the residential rate would be looking around $12.33, which is an increase from last year, which was $11.47. And commercial properties are projected to be about $22.88. And these numbers may change a little bit, once we have the final levy number.
What's the current commercial rate?
Pardon?
You said, you said that the current residential was $11.47, but what's commercial?
Yeah, yeah, the residential rate last year was $11.47, so what's proposed is $12.33.
Mm-hmm.
The commo, commercial, the CIP rate for FY '26, we're looking at proposal of $22.88, and that is up from what it, right now, I believe it's $21.71, I think 70-something cents, yeah. So, quick look, I was kind of a little bit down and dirty, looking at what the average assessed single family is, based on the information as is, that average single family assessment is at $951,000. And so, that means that the average single family is going to see an increase in their taxes, based on what we know right now, and that average will go up about $1100 a year. And I haven't looked at median value yet. So, last year's average tax was $10,618. This year, we're projecting that to be $11,730. And so, as the levy changes, goes up or down, you know, taxes will change too.
Say again, Charlie, sorry.
Oh, the Community Preservation Act?
Community Preservation Act.
So, this year, the Community Preservation Act is new. That does not impact the overlay at all, that's counted separately. And so, yes, that Community Preservation Act is going to add a little bit more on top of that tax bill. But Swamp Scott is actually, you know, with a hundred thousand exemption, and I believe you went to a hu, one and a half percent? Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah. So, it really becomes, got a little extra surcharge on your tax.
What was the average on that? On that extra surcharge?
I don't recall.
The average annual cost?
Doug, do you recall?
Doug must know.
Yeah, I think it was, I don't know, somewhere between 100, 150.
Yeah, 137, for some reason, it's sticking in my head. It is weird, I know.
And we've also had an increase in water and sewer.
Yeah, so how does this 10.5% compare to prior years? Does anybody know that often?
Yeah, I had not looked at prior years, all this was done at eight o'clock last night.
Patrick, do you have any idea?
I, off the top of my head, I don't have a, you know, solid comparison. I know we've seen some decent leaps the last few years, generally because of trends in property values. I think Paul would agree with that statement, but we can get that data for the board ahead of the classification hearing.
So, I don't know if it's Paul or Patrick, just help me or maybe others understand, you know, if the value of a single-family home is going up 3%.
Yes. Based on last year's average, correct?
Sure. And why is the, I mean, I don't know about anyone else, but unless there's something that I'm missing here, this 10.5% is pretty alarming. It is, why, why is it going up 10.5 if the single-family home is going up in three? Does it have something to do with the levy?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's always based on the levy.
Right. But it means the levy's going up, but it's particularly-
Because of our spending.
It's going up.
It's how much we're spending, Doug.
The levy's not about the spending.
The levy's going to have to cover, cover how much we're spending.
We need to get this information through a lot sooner, given we have the staff to be able to provide this to you.
Oh, okay.
The current tax levy that we're, that's being estimated right now is 12% than over last year's tax levy. So, your tax levy has gone up. And again, these are all just proposed numbers, you know, the final numbers aren't there yet.
Where are we with having a full-time assessor?
As I mentioned at the beginning-
I think we all-
-we will be re, reposting at a new salary.
Thank you.
This is one of the few positions, and I would put it in with Rich as an example, where it has a very specific impact-
Yeah, well, for sure.
-on all of these questions, based on having someone that's able to be there, not just for 15 hours, but in a full-time capacity.
Yep.
So, yes, we will be reposting with a new salary. That was part of why I was, raised it a couple of weeks ago. I met with the assessors as a board, and Paul, was that last week?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, one week becomes the next.
Yeah.
And it was, they had raised it, I'd heard from you all, but we wanted to complete the survey, so that it was not simply four or five of us, or six of us saying, it should be more, and not knowing what that's based on or from. Is that the last slide that you have?
It is.
Yes.
Could we walk through what the steps are as things are finalized, so that the board is aware of what the next steps are in there?
So, the, the next step would be for the values of what we call the LA4, which has to be submitted to Department of Revenue. And that'll be done, once the board makes that decision and votes on it, then I will submit it.
The Board of Assessors. The Board of Assessors you're talking about, not the Select Board.
Oh, Select Board, yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, at this point, Select Board really can't move further until the Board of Assessors gets their signatures on there and submits with the LA4, which is our, our value report, and the LA13, which is our growth report. And once those things get approved, then from the Board of Assessors' perspective, we've kind of done, they've done their part. At that point, you know, then classification, yes, would be, you know, you'd be having classification to vote on the final numbers, but that won't happen until special town meeting to wrap up all financial pieces. So, once that's done and the recap's completed, and all signatures are, are there, then everything's submitted to Department of Revenue at that point in time, and then, you know, your rate will be certified.
Okay.
What is the date that we have to get our rate in by? Patrick?
Well, the bills must be sent out by December 31st, so I think last year, we submitted around December 12th or so, and it takes a couple of days to get approval for, on the entire tax rate recap.
So, you're saying we need to bring this-
To the next meeting.
Well, so then, how do we do it? What, what's the timing looking like? Because we need town meeting first.
We have a meeting on the 3rd.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
So town meeting is the first, maybe the second, we meet again the 3rd, and I don't want to put that out there either, but I'm being practical. And then we would meet the 3rd, we could tackle this. Then so long as the assessor's pieces...
Yeah, once everything gets submitted from, from our end, I mean, I would hope that within a week, everything would get approved.
So if, if...
It's likely to be done on the 3rd.
So that's what I was going to, if we have, the assessors work complete, we anticipate that the, I'm just trying to think how we can get back in front of you with more complete information, even if it means we need to do like, that complete information review, give you time, and then meet remotely perhaps...
On the 10th.
Or hybrid. So we don't have to wait until the 17th, is all I'm saying, we could also wait, you know.
Yeah, I could probably get them all, both done.
If you'd like, I can work with Paul in advance of town meeting. We have a Select Board meeting that I can make this part of the agenda for the night one, to give you an update on where we are. And that way, we can make sure that we are setting up a timeline that is doable from your standpoint, that works in what has been completed by the assessor, and it turns it around as quickly as possible to get everything into DOR. But if, Diane, if we can just add that to the agenda for the 1st, so that I, I have the ability to speak to you all about it right before town meeting, just so it's an open meeting.
Because we have a posted meeting right before town.
Correct.
Got it, okay. It's going to be sick of each other that week.
Yep.
And perhaps put a placeholder on the 3rd, that we can just push if we're not ready for it, so that that also can be posted in advance of Thanksgiving, so we all know. Does that work for the board?
Mm-hmm.
And Paul, you and I can work on details of what, what works when and timing as we get closer to it.
Yeah, the sooner we can, you know, get things submitted, and then, you know, again, I can have no control of Department of Revenue, but I would certainly hope within a week that we would, we would hear something.
So you and I can talk, you know, tomorrow and this week, and then also at the beginning of next week, so...
Yeah, we do have a board meeting tomorrow.
Yep.
So until tomorrow happens, I don't know what's going to happen.
Of course. I just mean, I want to be in touch with you throughout the next 10 days, so that when we sit down on the 1st, I have as full a picture as possible. We have a placeholder for the 3rd, in case we have the opportunity to do something. And to the idea that we want to share the information and then have time to digest it, we can decide if we want to do a remote meeting or how we want to proceed. But I'm going to have it posted for the 1st, for me to give you all an update, and a placeholder on the 3rd, so you can act on it, assuming everything goes as quickly as possible with everything that's outside of the control of the board, if that works for you all.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll keep you in the loop, I mean, as things progress.
Perfect.
Okay, anything else for Paul or the Board of Assessors?
The only question I would have is if we wanted to get this community up to speed in less than the three to five years that you're forecasting out, because there's going, within that three to five years, there's an overall town evaluation. When do we do our town evaluations? Do we do them every five?
They're done annually.
No, no, the whole, the big town...
Recertification.
Recertification is done every five years now.
Okay, so that's coming up...
I haven't checked, but I think FY27 might be a recert year.
I think what I'm trying to get to is what, what really is the return on investment? If we were to get, if the whole town were to be balanced out, such as those two, those two, those two neighborhoods, like what, if we were to spend X amount of dollars, what would we get back in return?
I don't know if I can answer that. I mean, what I would hope is that there'd be more control within the assessor's office, that there'd be better accounting, you know, looking at building permits, so that we're not, you know, missing things, you know, sometimes that happens. You know, getting more done in-house is something I, I believe in, and I always have, even when I was working full-time, because then I can control, or the assessor can control what's happening, not just in the office, but when you also have more control about valuations and how you're moving forward. As an assessor, I always could explain to any taxpayer what occurred, what happened, and why, because I'm the guy that did it. But when we have lots of moving pieces around, it's kind of difficult to get a hold of everything. I think from my perspective, that it'd be in the town's best interest to be able to have that, you know, so that you can continue, you know, having consistency and uniformity in that, you know, looking through there. New growth is a big factor, I mean, especially, I think, assessors' office, I think towns kind of live and die by having that new growth. And of course, the more new growth you can capture, then I think that, you know, the town is better off in the long run. And again, it's just, you want to make sure that, if you're talking about equity in assessing or taxation, then it has to be really applied across the board, and making sure that, yeah, you know, like, I got a permit for a new kitchen, that I got you for that new kitchen, that it didn't kind of slide behind, slide behind. I see that permit for $300,000 for a new kitchen, and I say, oh, I went from average to good, well, you know, you're, you're making out on this, because that means you have a much nicer, upgraded...
That you're not paying for.
Right, custom kitchen. And, and so the assessment should reflect those things. So there's a lot there that we could look at, but again, it's just being able to have some of that manpower to do that. When I was working full-time, I had, I was myself, a full-time assistant assessor, and three admin staff. So, you know, can we do a lot more with that? Sure. You know, I'm not proposing to go to that extreme, but having enough...
Manpower.
Enough help in the office, you know, is, is a big deal.
There's two sides to the benefit. But one side is the tax rate.
Neil, would you mind passing the mic to those folks out here?
Thank you. There's two sides of the benefit to Mary Ellen's question. One is the tax rate that the town collects to be able to operate and fund our expenses. But the other side that no one's spoken about is the taxpayer, the residents of the town. And so when you take a look at a property that's properly valued, and you see a tax rate that is adjusted to the needs of the town with a fully, fully market-valued appraised property, there's no such thing as equity in taxes, but there's equity in ownership. And so when your house is properly valued at full market value, and your tax rate is a little lower, because your rate of value is higher, in the end, the benefit to the town is you still collect what you needed to, because you'll adjust your tax rate to get there. But to the homeowner, my home is worth more, and let me give you a practical example. When I first moved here in 1990, and I looked at Marblehead, and I looked at Swamp Scott, my realtor said to me, I could buy more house in Swamp Scott, because the value was lower and I could get more house. But he did not tell me, or she did not tell me, that my tax rate would be a little higher, because my value was a little lower, because the town still needs to run its operation. So if we properly value our homes, you have the opportunity to set a tax rate that it meets the needs, and not just an, an unbalanced or, or not a full-valued property. So now the homeowner gets to say, I have a problem that's actually a blessing. My home is worth more, my taxes are, cost less, and I have equity in my home. Would you rather have equity in your home that's worth more, with a lower tax rate, or a home that's worth less with a higher tax rate? That's the benefit, the full answer to Mary Ellen's question.
I think the other thing that, you know, sort of popped into my mind when Mary Ellen was saying that is, like, how, how we go about facilitating that more equitably, is it, does it involve, so yes, we hire a full-time assessor, but even that is going to still take years? So is there consultants that come in and help us get it up to snuff faster? And I think the question is, what's the return on that happening? Like, that would be interesting to have more data points on that.
And we can look into that more. The one thing that the Board of Assessors sent me a letter soon after starting, it's not, it's a full-time assessor with Paul staying on for a period of time.
Mm-hmm.
Not only to get this person up to speed on the history, as Paul's been able to figure it out here, but also because of his, his experience and expertise.
Mm-hmm.
So if we, if we are able to do both and figure out what that is, it could be that not only is Paul helping someone get on their feet, but it could, I'm speaking for you, we have not discussed this, potentially be that it's putting together a plan that says, you know, these are the types of resources, you should look in-house, you should, you can look outside. My concern, not about, I think we're all having a really good discussion, my concern was sort of the penny-wise approach that was used in the past.
Right.
And so it might be that we come back with something that's, it costs money to get to equitable more quickly, so that, again, it's applied as quickly and fairly as possible. But I'd be happy to work with Paul and whoever from the assessors' board is interested in figuring out what that could look like, so we do come back with more information for you all to react to, because I think the, the point is well raised, but I don't think we have enough information tonight to have a fruitful discussion for the, for the view.
Part of getting, you know, values or assessments more, you know, more equalized, it's in the details when you're looking at a property. It's the little things that you're finding or not finding, or that you find after the fact, and those are the little things that, you know, can add value to a property. But again, when we're analyzing sales, the first step is, you know, you know, what did we, what is it that we need to find about this property? Unfortunately, today, with, you know, listings, pictures, and great narratives about properties and everything else, this is where we find, that is part of our new growth, but we're re-establishing with our bases to see. So when you start eventually looking across town, when more of the details are, are in this range, then things do become more equitable, because on a level that everyone is, is closer to where market value should be, and market value is always changing, you know, whether, and the values were to come downtown-wide, but you have a high tax levy, just means you're going to have a higher tax rate, and you're still going to have to pay taxes to meet the levy. And so the Board of Assessors, we don't control the levy, you know, we're just on the backend. Our job is really is valuation, and, you know, I mean, it's simply, you know, value times tax rate equals the tax, that your portion of that, of that very big pie.
Thank you very much. Thank you guys. Look forward to the next meeting.
Sounds good.
You guys need to adjourn your meeting.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul, very much.
I'm not the bearer of good news.
Very good. All right, thank you both, joining us.
Thank you all.
We are moving on then to item number four, presentation and discussion of the Hawthorne Reuse Advisory Committee recommendation. So with us, we have Chair of the Hawthorne Reuse Committee, Brian Watson, and I think another member, Tara, just here for...
I'm just here for a...
Okay, thanks. So where shall we begin, Brian?
My name's Brian Watson, Chairman of the Hawthorne Reuse Advisory Committee, and I put together a short presentation that I'd like to go through without interruption, and then, you know, we can talk and have questions at the end. This presentation would take maybe 15 minutes, and it will be useful in terms of giving you a frame, framework of what we've done and reporting on our recommendations.
Okay. I will interrupt you, even though you asked for no interruption, that there may be questions along the way, and it may make sense to stop, so...
Okay.
We will do our best not to interrupt, but in case we need clarity, just to say...
It might be that I've anticipated some questions...
Okay.
...in putting together the presentation. I mean, I did try to do that.
Thank you.
Cover the obvious stuff, and I left out the other stuff. So the Hawthorne Reuse Advisory Committee consists of 12 appointed members. We were and are a very diverse group. I joked to people that the Select Board managed to find 12 people who have more opinions than the full, full 14,000 in town. In any case, our first meeting was March 18th, and we, we had 16 additional meetings. We had a clear mission statement that we kept in mind. One was to conduct a thorough analysis of the site, identifying all the factors impacting development. We defined clear goals and established explicit criteria with which to evaluate and compare, compare plans. We, we developed and drew a range of site plans and analyzed their strengths and weaknesses and trade-offs. And lastly, we kept in mind that we would ultimately need consensus, both the committee, the Select Board, and then, of course, eventually the town itself, around a, a single comprehensive plan. So our committee did a ton of work. Before we started picking plans or rejecting plans or comparing plans, our committee really went about educating ourselves, and on a wide variety of issues. You might remember me standing up here a year or so ago, saying if I participated in this committee, I would do my best to, to help contribute to a process that, that maybe filled in some gaps that, that didn't get filled in in the HDR process. And at that time, I said HDR left out a step, and that step was facilitating the discussion about how does a town select a development plan? What should be involved in that process? What does that process look like? Well, our committee learned that missing step, and, and we executed it, often very roughly, and I know sometimes some of the Select Board was there, and they observed with their own eyes, it was often contentious, but we did execute those steps, and we really did educate ourselves. We looked carefully at the Humphrey Street context, and the history of the street and the site prior to 1967. Prior to 67, the Hawthorne Building didn't exist. We went as a group to the site, we tried to grasp the size and scale of the lot, we tried to picture various site plans on the lot. A few of us even went out early on and, and chalk-marked the parking lot and laid out some of the site plans, just to, just to give ourselves an idea of what size these buildings were and how, how would they fit on the site. We drew and discussed about 20 site plans for the single lot, and we drew and discussed about 10 plans for the potential double lot. Depending upon which plan we were examining, we discussed who, the public sector or the private sector, would build certain portions of each plan. We, we discussed the possibility of selling or leasing a portion of the lot, again, depending upon the plan being examined. We have studied the financial pictures in approximate and comparative plans of many, of many of the different plans, I'm sorry, in approximate and comparative terms of the many different plans. And I will add, in light of the discussion tonight and so forth, our committee was extremely aware of how important the financial aspects of any plan would be. And we, we kept that in mind at all times. Lastly, and most important, most important, we developed a list of factors, considerations, and criteria for evaluating the pros and cons, the strengths and weaknesses of each plan. To the extent possible, to the extent possible, the committee strives to approach the problem with objective deliberation. Diane, could you put Appendix D on the play, on the screen, please? Okay, well, they're a little hard to read, but, but that's all right.
Doug, can you see, Doug, can you see the slides? Through teams?
They basically, what, they basically show categories of concern. You notice economics and financial concerns is first. They're all very important, they're all to be considered simultaneously, but with, with the financial factors, we weighed the revenue a plan would generate, the costs, the cost to the town, and then we, we did that for short-term and long-term, so we didn't look just at any one period of time, we tried to play it out. We looked at environmental considerations, could we make part of the site green space or could we not, and what goes along with that. We evaluated building arrangement and park arrangement, so it wasn't just a matter of a math problem of fitting 20,000 or 30,000 square feet on, on site, it's can you do that and create something that's, that's beautiful and coherent? Parking factors, obviously, self-explanatory, we needed to have a certain monicum of parking, visas, I'm sorry, vistas, vistas came, came out as a very important consideration we added. Can you go to the next slide, Diane? Yep. So the degree of alignment with the goals of the Humphrey Street District, the Humphrey Street Overlay District, there is a, there is a district that runs from the Fish House down to Mission on the Vane, it talks about how the town can pursue a sort of vital retail shop economic corridor, so we tried to, you know, we tried to factor that in as well. Social considerations, are we creating a place that people would enjoy, that people would come to? Does it create a sense of community, or can it create a sense of community? The existing Hawthorne Restaurant Building, we looked... The existing Hawthorne Restaurant Building, we looked hard at that and what it would mean to either leave it or not. Building uses, we looked at what would be in the buildings that we would propose if we did. You know, again, shops, retail, residential, would there be residential? We also looked at feasibility and timing. Every one of our plans went through the greater in terms of, is this a feasible plan? Can it be done in a timely manner? Is it too complex to pursue for a municipality? And then lastly, permitting and zoning, that's obvious. For anybody evaluating plans or expressing an opinion about a plan or a preference, these criteria are like a test or a filter that each proposal or plan option must really be submitted to. I used to tell the committee, we had an expression in architectural firms, no plan gets a free pass. That means every plan goes through the same, is subject to the same sorts of questions. And that's a fairness issue. It's a way to keep us all honest. It means that one plan, when you're comparing one plan to another, you're asking the same questions of it. The other thing about these frameworks, these criteria, they provide, and this is very important, they provide a shared grounding or orienting framework and a shared vocabulary for a committee of 12, a select board of five, a town meeting of 324, or a town of 14,000, to engage with each other, to engage with multiple site plan options, ultimately to select a wise plan. After weighing these considerations, and believe me, there was a lot of discussion about all aspects of these, I've barely even touched on the depth of the discussions we had, the committee decided that any development of the site, any development of the site should include a blend of five ingredients to best satisfy these criteria. We call it a mixed use plan. It contains these ingredients, some amount of green space, public access and walk along the shoreline, some amount of buildings, some amount of parking, and some amount of revenue generation. And all of that blended into a plan that also possessed coherence, logic, and created a memorable, attractive sense of place across all parts of the site. Now, the committee, in light of the criteria, concluded that retaining the Hawthorne building, whether a single or a double lot site, did not achieve these goals by and large, and in fact, would be an obstacle to achieving these goals. So the committee unanimously did recommend abolishing it. There was one person who was indecisive about it, but the rest of us were unanimous about it. Could you, Diane, put Site Plan A on the screen? So that's Site Plan A, those are the existing conditions which show the footprint of the Hawthorne building and roughly 110 or 115 parking spaces. So this was an important decision and obviously it's one the town is grappling with. It's a tough call. But the reasons the committee felt confident, and remember, this is, these are 12 very diverse people. We all walked in and marched with very diverse opinions. Leaving the Hawthorne, we decided precluded any substantial green area at all. It precluded substantially any view or coastline walk access. Now, I'm saying substantial because it's conceivable that, you know, a walk line, a coastline access could be hung off the back, but it's not a substantial piece of work. It is poor town planning, very poor town planning, to have a large parking lot in the most prime, most visible, most significant parcel of land in what should be really an imageful downtown, not one we have to apologize for. Furthermore, the building is not architecturally noteworthy and it needs substantial costly repair and renovation. When measured by the Humphrey Street Overlay District, it violates the intentions, the guidelines, and the principles in the Humphrey Street Overlay District. It does not contribute to that district. It's a flop environmentally. The parking lot is literally one acre, so it's a heat island. It's a tremendous heat island. And here's an important thing, we can beat whatever the Hawth... Here's a really important thing because the idea is to compare plans, there's no absolutes, but we can beat leaving the restaurant. We can beat it financially, environmentally, we can beat it in attractiveness, we can beat it in downtown placeness and image building. So it falls, when measured by the criteria, it falls way short. The committee also unanimously opposes leasing it for one, two, or three years to another operator. We think, bearing in mind that financial issues are very important, we think it's actually the financially weakest of the plans. We think we can beat it with our proposal. We also think that it's an obstacle. One could say, well, what's the harm? Rent it for a year. Is that an obstacle? In fact, it is because that would require time and attention and resources that this town, you know, has difficulty providing. It would be a managerial burden on our town and it complicates things. Keeping a restaurant in a one acre... And lastly, keeping the restaurant in a one acre parking lot would probably be the site outcome least expected by the townspeople. It's the solution that's least expected. And believe me, we heard from 550 people, you know, a relative handful, 10 or 12, said keep the restaurant. Everybody else said do other things.
So I want to stop you right there. What was the mechanism to hear from 550 people? How did you hear from 550?
We had two public forums. We also solicited through questionnaires, written responses. So we had 450, roughly 450 written responses, and then we tallied almost 100 verbal comments at the two town forums, and we had about four people taking notes on comments. I personally read about 150 of the written stuff.
So you have 450 written responses?
Pardon?
You have 450 written responses?
Yes.
That you're going to submit that we can look at?
If you'd like to, sure. Yeah, yep. They were, you know, if you look at the 550, a slight majority preferred a mixed use plan, and it was almost half and half. Almost, almost half preferred all park, an all park plan.
Do you have those numbers in your presentation here?
No. I'm almost done. I don't have them, but I can certainly give them to you. I mean, Marcy's office tallied them all, so it wouldn't be any problem to give them to you. As I say, it was almost half for full green park and slightly more than half preferred... Actually, we showed three plans at the forums. We showed G1, which is the one we ultimately selected. We showed E3 and E4, but all three of those were essentially, conceptually the same. They showed between 25,000 and 35,000 square feet of building toward the front. They showed the whole back half of the site as a park, so roughly 50%, always on the ocean side because that... Well, let's just go to G1. I'm almost finished and I just, I meant to show you this in a diagram. Diane, can you just put G1 on the screen?
Can you take your microphone with you, Brian, so folks at home can hear you? Thank you.
Okay.
We can see here.
Okay, okay. All right. So G1 is a single lot plan, meaning it's the plan that the committee recommends if, in the event that the town does not buy the church parking lot. So this is the single lot plan. You can see the buildings are arranged to create a courtyard that's open to the street. The buildings shown here, those are the footprints, and the committee recommends between roughly 25,000 square feet and 35,000 square feet, just a range. And the courtyard is roughly 50 feet wide. It's the right width for the scale, for the scale of the buildings. You can see the back 50% of the site is parkland. The courtyard is completely open to the park and the street, so there's a tremendous sense of openness. I mean, there was one really strong common theme across the 550 questionnaires. It was interesting. Almost everybody talked about needing quite a large, open view. So that, we just, that was, that came through so strongly, we tried to respect it. And then to the right of the buildings here, you see a relatively small parking lot. That's about 30 spaces. One of the things, one of the characteristics of every single plan we looked at, say 30 plans, every one of them really fights to achieve the amount of parking that would be most desirable. So I think it's fair to say that no plan gives you the ideal amount of parking, but we tried to, we tried to provide what we thought was at least a modicum respectable amount of parking. And it just gets difficult to achieve other goals if parking starts to be too big an item. In this plan, you see the dotted lines, the dashed lines across those two buildings. That could be a second or third floor connection of those buildings across the open courtyard. So a person on the sidewalk still sees the view, gets the complete view. Those are second and third floors above eye level. And again, that's to help create some definition on Humphrey Street. So one of the goals was, can we reinforce the Humphrey Street Overlay District? And the committee envisions and recommends that the first floors of all these buildings be retail or shops, you know, cafes, restaurants. You know, the first floor should be business and commercial and hope to generate life in this courtyard. And then what's in the second and third floor or second floor, depending on the heights of the buildings, you know, would yet to be determined. We don't think the town would be building these buildings. You know, we envision that either, a developer would either buy the front half of the lot or lease the front half. The committee favored leasing it, but again, that's not our call. But the town wouldn't be the contractor. And what I mentioned at the last select board meeting, but didn't really have a chance to talk about was, I know the town is concerned about coming up with, you know, $800,000 to demolish the restaurant. One way to skin the cat, and the committee talked about this, is that sometimes with plans like this, a municipality will fold demolition of an existing building into the development, the development plan of the buildings. So if the town put out an RFP for this site, tearing down the Hawthorne would be part of the job of the developer, even though the land itself would be retained by the town. It's a way for the town not to have to put out money at all. Now, it must be said that a developer then, you know, in whatever arrangement the town makes with the developer, you're either going to get a little less money from the land sale, or if it's a leasing situation, obviously the rent will be lower to make up for the fact that that fellow put out 800,000 to take the building down. So it's not a free lunch, but it is a way not to need money from the town to get this done.
Brian, can I ask you a question, please?
Yeah.
Just about the second or third floors, I think in some instances residential was used as a way to potentially entice developers, right, to come because it's not always as profitable to have retail and commercial. Residential is sort of where the developers make their profit. But I think when we originally obtained the property, it was pretty clear from the public that, I mean, there was almost an immediate cry for us to put a deed restriction on the property that it would never be used for residential. So with that in mind, what is the likelihood of RFP responses if there is a restriction on residential?
I would say realistically, there won't be too many thrilled developers if residential is precluded. In other words, the RFP, if it's said in black and white, there shall be no residential uses, I think it's a mistake and I don't think, I'm not sure any developers would respond or reply.
I agree with you.
It's not a real world, it's not really a real world option. Now, I want to say our committee was divided on this and I was disappointed that we couldn't get to the place where we said, it's not realistic, but we couldn't. But I think realistically, realistically and also architecturally and also in terms of what's good for the town, you know, my thought would be that it's, they're three-story buildings and the second and third floors are apartments and condos perhaps, but they can be apartments. I will say, you know, I listened to people for nine months on this, you know, I listened carefully and talked to as many people as I could. Part of the feeling among townspeople comes from fright that we're going to end up with a Concordia. I mean, or people talk to me all the time, well, what about the Westcott? I mean, these buildings are not the scale of the Concordia, they're not the scale of the Westcott, and I know people don't want that sort of thing. I don't want that sort of thing. The committee doesn't. But if the RFP is written very well, you know, the square footage you get will be controlled, you might say not more than eight or 10, you know, apartment units or condo units. I mean, there is a way, you know, we don't have to be frightened of the Concordia or the Westcott. It's, you know, it's not a reason to ban residential, but...
And I understand that and I get the point that that might be in the best interest for the town, but the response from the town upon purchase was pretty clear that residential should not be considered for that lot. And that lot was being purchased for the community at large and not for individual or wealthy members of the community to purchase apartments or condos there, so...
Yeah. Well, that was not reflected in 550 responses. I mean, you know, that was, you're talking about when the land was purchased three years ago.
Right, when town meeting authorized the purchase of the land, correct?
Yeah, right. So, I mean, we, our committee talked a lot about that. We said, what was the town meeting telling us? What were they doing? What impression did they have as to what would be built? Certainly, a lot of people were under the impression it would be a pretty full park. But it was interesting. You know, at the public forum, you probably remember, I showed, you know, the committee showed a full park and then it showed three plans that had buildings and mixed uses. And in our responses, no, well, very few people expressed the idea that they would not like to see residential. I mean, I...
Sorry, Brian, but this is Doug. I think that's because no one, no one...
No one knew about it.
Nobody thought there was going to be residential there. That wasn't even...
Right, it wasn't an explicit question.
Wasn't even presented.
I guess that's the...
Okay.
How many, how many parking spaces is that?
Twenty...
It's about 28 to 30.
28 to 30 parking spaces and that's 25,000 square feet of retail?
Between, no, no, no. 25,000 square feet of total building, not all retail.
Total building of both rows of those buildings?
Yes, if you add the two buildings together, and if they're two stories, they totaled 25,000 square feet.
They're just under 6,000, it looks like.
Think of each footprint as 6,000.
I just want to know how 30 parking spaces is able to support that amount of retail? That's...
I mean, he started, it won't...
Well, I said, I said at the beginning, it's, I'd like to see a little more parking, but it would work. No, absolutely every plan, look at all 30 plans. You could add, you really could add 20, 30% to all the parking solutions you have. But we were trying, we were, the committee was really sort of committed to trying to achieve all things at once, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
And Brian, what's the split? It looks about half? Is that kind of what...
Yeah, very close. It's 52% commercial, the front half, and 48% green space. So, and here's an interesting thought. We didn't start out, we didn't give that to ourselves as the percentage. That was by default at the end. So that's really healthy. In other words, that split came about organically. So we said, you know, what, how could buildings be arranged? What's a reasonable square footage? Can we create a nice place? And it was only after we did that that we measured everything out and we said, oh, look, look, by happy accident, it's 50/50, you know.
So how many parking spaces do we have now in that parking lot? And what does this...
About 110.
Okay, so from 110, this brings it down to about 30.
Yes.
Right? And that is including 10 to 12 residential units that would be, also be utilizing that parking?
If, if, if there were residential...
With this plan, right?
Yeah, if there were. And we did talk about that a bit. The committee, you know, as I said, the committee was very, very split about this issue, but the committee did say, if there were residential, we would assign only one space per apartment. We would not assign two because that simply can't be done.
We can't mathematically.
Yeah, mathematically, it's too much. So we would just assign one.
I can appreciate that the committee was divided on this topic, but G1 is not feasible without residential. You've already said that, right?
Well...
It's less likely feasible than not.
I think it's less likely, but it's conceivable that somebody would put office space up there.
But then that needs parking also, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Let's just go to the next slide, Diane. Okay, so this shows a double lot option. The committee recommended K1. Can't see the 1, but this would be, you can, it looks familiar because it's essentially the same principles, the same concepts.
Just large.
Just ballooned out a little bit.
Yeah.
And so I, I don't really probably need to belabor it. The courtyard, again, is the, the central space and it's a community space. The parking here is about 50 spaces in total, but still, it's a little light for the buildings. Now, the, either of these plans could be adjusted. I mean, the, the town could cut back the square footage of the building, you know, leave, leave 30 parking spaces and cut back. I mean, the town could, for example, leave off that last 40-foot segment on both sides and thereby bring, bring the building's square footage into a better relationship with the amount of parking. I mean, so these, these plans can be modified. They aren't meant to be set in stone.
Right.
It's to show a direction and a concept.
Brian, I just, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you again, but I just wanna note that the town is not currently pursuing purchase of the full lot. So just, just for the folks at home, in case they missed our meeting last week, we are pursuing a LOI with the church to purchase a portion of the lot, which would be approximately half. So, just to say it.
Yep. The committee, the committee didn't, did not take a position on whether, you know, we just didn't make a recommendation, should the town purchase a portion or, or any, or any part of the lot. It would be, it would be logical for us to take a position on it because these plans, you know, obviously depend or not on whether the town pursues that second lot, but we just didn't, simply didn't have time to do it. So we, so therefore, we didn't make a recommendation.
And I think what you've just said numerous times is, you know, any, you basically recommended a recipe, right? Ingredients to the recipe.
Yes.
Some, you can add more, you can add less, they're meant to be a little bit more fluid than they are. This is exactly what, this is the special number, right? The committee decided 57% should be park and...
Well, no, no, no. I wanna correct you there. We did not do that.
I know, that is what I'm saying. I'm saying this is...
Yeah, okay.
You recommended ingredients to the process.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And now we are able to sort of move around and slide to figure out how those ingredients work, whether it is one and a half lots, whether it is two lots, whether it is one lot. But the concepts, the philosophies are there for us to consider.
Yes, yes. The, 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 the thing that's, that is fixed, you're right, absolutely right what you said. The thing that is fixed, though, is that we grouped the buildings, all the committee felt strongly that the buildings are grouped toward Humphrey Street and that the green space is sort of at the coastline side of the site. So that was, that was important to every member of the committee because the idea is to bunch, bunch the activity along Humphrey Street, take advantage of the retail synergy, and then leave whatever green space is, is there, let that naturally be along the coastline. It, it also works very well with the coastline access. It just makes sense for the organization of, of the plan. And the, the only, I guess the only other thing I'd add is that, and we only had two committee meetings in the last month where we could really talk about what the select board, you know, has been doing in terms of pursuing a sale or talking about leasing the restaurant. You know, we heard, when everyone else heard that the Athenas family was leaving the restaurant and we talked long and hard about whether it made sense to lease it. And we feel like if, if the, if the select board wanted to make a decision at some point in the next few months, we don't have, we don't need to wait two years or three years to get started on, on a plan. Obviously, if, if at some point, if at some, and the committee talked a lot about this because, you know, we're for the town. We were, you know, we're for the town, we wanna help the town do the right thing. If, if, and these are select board decisions, but we all thought, if the select board decided to say, look, we'll give, we'll give pursuing this second lot, you know, some period of time, four months, five months, and then we, if we can't get it done by then, we take, we take G1, we can start on G1. So, so this isn't a situation where the town may want a tenant in the building because they simply wouldn't, you wouldn't even need a tenant for a year. We, we, as a town, we could get an RFP out the door and start soliciting developers to build G1 and, you know, it's not more than, it's not more than a year to get that, that thing going.
You know, I'd just like to say that I thank you so much for your hard work. I've attended almost every single one of these meetings. And I historically attend a lot of public meetings, especially as a select board member. So when I say that these meetings were really hard, that's close to an understatement. You had multiple, very powerful personalities. Um, you know, there was a lot of contention consistently, meeting after meeting after meeting, yet you were able to get through a lot of this work and come up with exactly what Katie is referring to, a recipe, ingredients on how to put everything together. And I just wanna say thank you very much, you know, from me, for all your hard work. And I'm sure you're gonna be very happy that now your committee's work is finished and you can enjoy the fruits of your labor and we can now move on and start to think as a committee, as a select board, on the right way to move forward and to continue to gather some more information.
I, I would, I would second all that. The entire committee's done a launching pad for bringing this to a conclusion.
Sorry, Doug, you were choppy there for a minute. Would you mind repeating yourself?
Oh, it wasn't, wasn't worth repeating, but I just said, I think, no, no, I just, I think I, I second what Mary Ellen said. I think the committee's done incredible amount of work and provided us with a great launching pad to bring this to a conclusion now.
Okay, great. Um, so just so folks at home are aware, if you aren't familiar with the schedule, as Brian mentioned, they, they met last night to approve the, the report, which is now before the board. We were provided that this morning. So we haven't really, you know, had too much of a chance to, to digest it. We all have not been to every meeting like Mary Ellen, although I have watched many.
David was...
David, anybody else? Basically, I haven't attended all of them, is what I'm saying. Watching from home and trying to stay in the loop, but I think there needs to be some time for us to go over the...
Absolutely.
The report, to then come back together, reflect on what we feel like the report is saying to us and the, you know, the, and how you've put forth the ingredients and how we go forward.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we only voted last night. We, we, we wanted to get the report to you much sooner, but, you know, with 12 people, it's just really hard. We, we revised the report, I think, six times. Everybody had to get a whack at it. So it just was a, you know, it was a hard work thing, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
And, but in the end, I wanna say this, you know, it, it, the first two or three meetings, I was in despair. I didn't see how this group of 12 people, you know, were ever gonna agree on anything. But we, we slowly and painfully and with lots of argument, did get closer to each other and by the end, we had quite a coalition around the principles and the ideas and people were excited. Um, in the end, the report was accepted last night, nine to one. Nine to one, two people couldn't come. One of them sent a note to me and said that person was in favor, the other one I never got in touch with. So you could think of it as 10 to one with one not, you know, incomunicado. And the thing, I, I guess the last thing I would say is, I do think it's notable that this diverse group of people, we, we were 12 chairman on this committee. This was a committee of 12 chairman. That this group who have strong opinions that differ wildly on many of the aspects of this project unanimously and feelingly felt that leaving the Hawthorne Restaurant loses when you, when you submit it to the filters that we know are important, including and most of all, the financial end result of, of, of whatever goes there. So, so that's a, that's a significant factor. And, and of the 550 responses that people sent us, maybe 10, maybe 10 said, leave the restaurant. You know, so that's, that's really interesting.
Thank you.
You can...
So Brian, Brian, can you, can you share the detailed financial calculations that the committee did to come to that incredibly precise decision?
Well, no, yes, I can. Our numbers are not precise, our conclusion is, is, is firm, but we...
Well, it's pretty hard to have a pretty firm conclusion without precise numbers, huh?
We think that, that G1, for example, if G1 is two stories and, and if it, if it does include a residential component, that's, you gotta say that in fairness, but if the second floor is residential...
And your committee was totally split on residential?
Absolutely down the middle. So it's a tough call, absolutely. But if, if it includes a residential component on the second floor, then we estimated it was in the neighborhood of $230,000 per year property tax, approximately, 230,000. And we, we went through the numbers a number of times. And if you do three stories, obviously, it's higher. It's maybe it's $350,000 in property tax from, from a 35,000 square foot development. Again...
Is that zoned for three stories?
I'm trying to picture a three-story building on the front of Humphrey Street.
Well, think of Popo's Hot Dogs, that's three stories.
Right, with the bottom of it being retail and then...
Yeah.
The floor is a residential.
That's right.
And the 30 spots for parking.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
But the, the thing to remember is, the, the thing, the thing to remember is, um, if the committee, if the select board feels that, that ratio of parking is, is too weak, then, then we cut, cut back the square footage of the building.
The square footage of the building or the square footage of the park?
No, you'd have to cut through, you'd have to cut back the square footage of the building a little bit.
Then that reduces the commercial space and the residential space.
It reduces the need for parking.
It, it's, it's bringing the, right, it's bringing the square footage of the buildings into a better ratio with the parking you can provide. Now, it is a municipal downtown site. Most, I mean, the trend in town planning is to recognize that in, in a municipal downtown site, you're never gonna really provide the parking that, you know, that you can provide elsewhere. It's a downtown site, you know, and, and people, you know, in some sense, people are asked to figure out a way. They have to park four blocks away, they have to, they have to cope with it, but it's a, but that's the nature of a downtown site.
Right.
Now, we're not, we wouldn't ask residential units to do that, we would give each one one space. So it's not realistic to say to an apartment, you know, or a condo, you can't park anywhere near here.
Right, right.
So, yeah, but back to Doug's question, our num, when you guys have a chance to read the report, you'll see that we give ranges of numbers because who, who can tell you the exact property tax value? But we, we based it on realistic assessments. I mean, we're very familiar with the, with the $11 per thousand and the commercial tax rate of 22 per thousand. I mean, we, we used all the real numbers and, and used them for the square footage of the building. So we, I mean, we weren't interested in kidding the players. We, you know, we're serving the town, we wanna try and be accurate to the extent that we can. But we looked at, you know, we looked at what a, a full park, for example, would cost, that would, that would be all-town money. It would cost eight or nine million dollars to do a full park. We, the entire, with the exception of one person, the entire committee just laughed at that. I mean, look at the duress we're under financially, we're, we're just in a gray spot to spend eight million bucks. So it didn't take a lot of convincing for the committee to say, we need to generate some revenue. And the idea was to, in, in our mind, we needed to compare it to, one of the comparisons we needed to make was, you know, does it beat a potential restaurant occupant? You know, whatever a new restaurant could generate. That was, that was certainly something we had in our minds. So I, I, I think, I think the beauty of it is you could, you could beat the revenue from a restaurant and achieve many other things. I mean, I mean, think about it, if the restaurant, if the restaurant were to stay, you got a 100-car parking lot, you could cut it back a little, I'm sure, but it's still a giant parking lot in downtown on the street. And then the big, the other big thing our committee talked a lot about was, realistically, it, some, some operator, is any operator gonna come into a restaurant for a one, two, or three-year lease and put, put in two, three, four million, whatever it is, and then, and then he, and then he's gonna leave in three years? There's nobody who's gonna do that. It's, that's not real-world thinking. And, and...
Is, is anybody asking somebody to come in or...
Well, I mean...
And we had, at Resident Comment, we had a gentleman come in asking for the RFP right away. I mean, there's, there's still a lot of things hanging out there and...
Yep.
Those, those variables have to be, you know, put into the equation.
Yep, absolutely. The committee looked at...
Five minutes tonight.
You know, we looked at the possible options, you know, if somebody ca, if somebody ca, I mean, conceptually, if somebody came in and said, I'll, I'll do that, you know, is that a person who's gonna pay a, a property tax and a rent and so forth and so on and then still have money?
Well, I think we'd have to find out through an RFP. I have to be honest with you, I've been at 90% of your meetings and I don't remember any extensive conversations about that and...
Well, we did this the last two meetings and you were not at the last two meetings.
Right.
Okay? We only did this the last two meetings...
Oh, just the last two meetings, okay.
Because it became an issue. I mean, you know, I was here and spoke about the warrant article.
Right.
We really hired, I have to tell you, we held two meetings under duress because we wanted to be relevant. We wanted to, we saw what would come up at town meeting and we wanted to be able to offer the town some thoughts that would be relevant. And we, we are alarmed, I mean, we really are alarmed at the idea that this town would, would think it has the managerial horsepower to, to pull off some of these more complex, you know, arrangements, you know, buying, buying another lot, needing to go, to negotiate and do it. And then, and then what is the plan if another portion of the lot is, is purchased? I mean, the, this is not cons, you know, we, this is not conservative behavior for a town to do this. We're not property managers, we're not developers, you know, we can't build things. I mean, we're, we really put ourselves in a, in a, I think, a, you know, it's a dangerous and risky proposition to, to go forward too ambitiously because we're a municipality and...
Well, Brian, Brian, sorry to interrupt you there, but, I mean, isn't that, isn't that even accentuated? I mean, by, now you're asking us to go forward with tearing down a, the restaurant and then, and you guys wanna do it right away?
No, that's incorrect.
Wouldn't necessarily...
That's incorrect, Doug. Not right away.
Well, okay.
Not right away, no.
Well, you don't wanna, you don't want us to run it out, so you want it...
Just wanna leave an empty building.
No, here, here's, I, here's what we, here's what our committee...
Brian, Brian, you let me talk for a while, just...
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yes.
But then you want us to take the leap of faith that we're gonna be able to, you were just saying that we're not developers, but you want us to find somebody to, and this whole thing is predicated on being able to develop something that has retail, three-fourths of which isn't even on the street, it's running back towards the park. And then it requires office or residential on top. It's like, it's, we know from Public Comment tonight, word swirling around, that there are people interested in really revitalizing the, the restaurant. We have, as far as I'm aware, I have no idea of anybody that wants to, you know, create a brand-new little commercial slash office slash residential complex there. So, I mean, that just feels like an even bigger swing at the fences of not knowing how that's really gonna happen.
The, the, let me just be clear on one thing. That, the gentleman was wrong who spoke earlier.
Oh.
We, we are not, we are not, give me a chance. We are not asking that restaurant be taken down immediately. And the, the opposite. I stood up there and I said, I don't want the town to put out a million bucks to, to prepare a site, as Doug says, on conjecture. The way it's done is, and, and towns have done this, our committee looked at a Shrewsbury RFP that was very similar. There's a municipal building and it'd be, the demolition of that building doesn't occur until the whole, the plan is decided and then RFP, and RFP is put out. The, the select board is talking about putting out an RFP to, to get a restaurant operator, it's no different. You put out an RFP to solicit developer responses, to create, to create a plan. Nancy, can you put E4, E3 on the plan? No, okay, well, there are plans, we show, you know, we didn't, we didn't write it into the report, but we show plans that have the same effect and impact that where the buildings are along the street, parallel to the street. The point is, there is no risk to G1 or E3 or E4, which show similar square footages, because we won't start until a developer is on board. It's an RFP process. The town carefully writes the RFP, I'll help write the RFP. But I mean, the select board carefully writes the RFP to give the necessary parameters, ground rules, you know, and so forth. Then the town sits with, suppose, three or four developers respond. You pick the one, the town picks the one it thinks is closest, and then it sits down and there's a conversation, it might be three conversations, and you, the town will not proceed, will not sign on a dotted line with the developer until the developer's happy and then town's happy. And the building doesn't come down until that process occurs. And the Hawthorne would be demolished by the developer, which is done typically by a developer than a municipality. Can you find E3 or E4?
Katie, Katie, we, I have...
Oh, okay, okay.
So we're...
Yeah, it looks like here's a, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Danielle.
No, no.
There's a hand raised online and I was thinking, we might let him speak. Mr. Kelleher, I believe it is.
Is this Mr. Kelleher who is, who stood up and was wrong?
Go ahead, Mr. Kelleher.
Yeah, I spoke earlier, sorry I had to cut out. I just wanted to thank the committee, I think the drawings look great. But I, you know, I still think that realistically, that's, none of that can happen in the short term and I just want, and I apologize if I said they wanted to raise it immediately. I didn't mean any offense by that, so I'm sorry he brought that up. I just wanted to correct that, I mean, again, I appreciate all the work. But I just think that you're right in one regard that, yeah, I don't think the traditional restaurant operator is going to go in there and invest a ton of money. But I do think there's a possibility where possibly someone could operate a restaurant business and make a more community-focused space in the meantime that was something that, you know, the town maybe gets behind and that helps further along the future process. Because as we saw the present, a few agenda items before, the numbers weren't great on the forecast. So I can't foresee, I would think you'd want to get something that the town can use and maybe try out. And, yeah, I agree, we shouldn't be in the real estate business as a town, but we are. So I just, again, I'm excited to try and present something that would be beneficial and, you know, a way for the town to kind of try out what the town could do there.
Thank you. Go ahead, Danielle.
I forgot what I was going to say, but thank you. So I'm trying to wrap my head around this whole thing. And I think that where I see it getting off track is this, you guys did so much work. I mean, I'm reading, I've read through the pages. And this committee was tasked with giving the select board options for that parcel, right? And that's kind of where it ended. That was the scope. We needed to see what it could look like, what it could potentially be, pluses and minuses. And you've done that, you've done that and more, right? But I think that after that part of it, the questions about RFPs and renting and leasing and the pros versus cons, that's kind of, that's for this board to decide and evaluate and figure out, right? It comes back to us, no matter what. So, you know, I know one thing, and I haven't had 550 or 450 people contact me, but the people that have, and there have been a lot, have categorically said they do not want residential development in that parcel, right? So if I take that piece out of your equation, I don't know how viable it is. I don't know what else I'm left with for stories two and three. If I have to depend on it being flex office space when 90% of the world works from home, that's not a sure bet for me. That's not, that's not, you know, I'd be, that's a risky proposition in my head, right?
I agree.
The other piece for me is, everybody and their mother in this town complains about parking and not having enough of it. So looking at this with reducing the parking to create this fabulous-looking little community environment, I just don't know where people are going to park and how they're going to get there. And if, and if people complain about it now and we put this, you know, courtyard there, we're only going to hear more complaints about it, right? And if we can't financially make it viable, plus that, I think people will be up in arms. So I'm trying to really understand that, those pieces, that's where I am.
I think, Danielle, there are some solutions for parking that are not contemplated on, and they were not in the scope of what the Hawthorne re-use committee was meant to be contemplating, right?
Right.
So like, we, there's been discussion about the St. John's, you know, back lot potentially coming back online.
Right, which I don't even consider, honestly, I'm not even conceptually putting that in my head.
There are just other, there are other things on the table outside of the Hawthorne property and the church property, which may or may not become parking in some form or another that could be up for consideration for any of these concepts. So, and that's not within the purview, we didn't ask them to look at that and it would be unfair to put that on you to answer because...
Right, oh, absolutely not.
The only reason we're even, I'm thinking about it, or we have thought about it as a board, is related to the Hadley Hotel reuse and how, you know, what happens there and how that parking works out and, you know. So I think there are some solutions out there and we'll see what comes to fruition with, and nothing will solve it 100%, but...
No.
And, but right now, as a, you know, as the public, we don't have use of the Hawthorne parking anyway. There was, until a few days ago, there was an attendant, there was an attendant that precluded and prevented residents and folks from the region who were visiting Humphrey Street from using this at all unless you were dining or at the Hawthorne Restaurant. So, Mr. Town Administrator, are we now allowed to park? Are residences of the Swamps, of Swambskett and the region?
They own it.
They still have a lease.
They don't own it, they lease it.
Lease it.
They lease it until December 9th.
They still own the parking lot under their lease.
Still own the...
They still have use.
Can I just answer David's question?
We will, I'm more than happy to talk to both people on the operations side, town and the legal side. Right now, they still have a lease. Just because they're not operating does not mean that they do not still have care, custody, and control of that property.
Yep.
That, the lease expires, our authorization to do anything with them expires, you know, two, three weeks after that. So more than happy between now and the 9th, which will give me two meetings, I think, with you all to put together a plan of what could be possible, what makes sense. And also, the other thing that I keep repeating, I did with quotes, making sure that our insurance appropriately covers that use so that we're all in as best a position possible should we decide to go down that road. It means me bringing information to you so you all can direct us.
Hey, I would add one thing about the residential and height issue. If you look at Humphrey Street now, between the Fish House and Mission, you know, that's the Humphrey Street corridor. If you look at that and you walk up and down it, as our committee did, at least half the buildings are now three stories. And it's a formula that many of them have sort of the retail commercial on the first floor and second and third floor apartments. So that's, that exists now in the majority of the buildings. Do the walk, go from the Fish House to the Mission. So what our committee is recommending is not an aberration from what's on Humphrey Street. It's really more of a continuation of what's on Humphrey Street. And as I said, the buildings, as Doug made a good point when he said the buildings are turned perpendicular to the street, it's not ideal for retail commercial and shops. They're much happier if they're turned parallel to the street. Those plans, that could happen. But, but the bigger point to, I think, keep an eye on is, what does, what's the character of Humphrey Street now? I mean, you said yourself that you're hearing from people who don't want apartments above the stores. That's interesting, but...
No, no, they don't want more residential.
They don't want more residential. But I mean, we're in a sense, the committee is embracing probably the most traditional town planning formula that exists across the country. I mean, shops above, you know, restaurants, apartments above the stores is very traditional town planning.
Actually, your committee's not embracing that.
Pardon me?
Your committee is split on that.
Yes, that's correct. All I'm saying is, that's right, we are.
Right.
And I'm saying, okay, but the select board can think, you know, independently of us, right? They probably will. So I'm, all I'm suggesting is that the select board be really familiar with what's on Humphrey Street now. So that, you know, I want you guys to make the right decision. The town, I mean, the town wants you guys to make the right decision, so that's a really useful thing.
I think if we think back to a year ago, as you said, we were, a lot of us were in this room with a lot of other people saying a lot of things about the HDR plan.
HDR, yes.
HDR plan, right?
Yes, yes.
And, and some of the missteps on Humphrey Street in retrospect, right, hindsight's 20/20.
Yes, yes.
And how frustrating it can be to go down that street and to see three-story buildings that are only residential, right? And to see that that blocks the view of the ocean and to see that it, you know, that it really, maybe if we had the opportunity to do again, we wouldn't do it that way. So I think when, from that conversation and from the conversation right post-purchase, it really felt to me like there was a resounding like, let's get as far away from residential as possible. I think that is one of the reasons why the highlight of open space was so strong in the Warren article because it was to say, this is not the thing that has been happening on that street for the past X amount of years. And so I understand the fair and balanced approach that your committee takes and I appreciate that. But I'm just saying, like, from what I heard from a public position up until, you know, tonight when we're talking about it, it's like, well, maybe taking what is, isn't necessarily the approach for this particular space as the open or mouth of Swambskett and, you know, that meant to be the gem, the entrance into our town. We don't want it to look like the rest of the street. We actually wish the rest of the street maybe didn't look that way. And we actually wish, in hindsight, we would have done smaller buildings with maybe retail on the bottom floor. But we can't do all that over. We can focus on this and do this the way that maybe is going to work better for us going forward, so that's just an option.
No, I hear you, but I think the town's traumatized by the Concordia. I mean, we heard people say, we don't want the Concordia. The town is reacting strongly against the Concordia, which is four and a half stories. So I understand exactly what you said, but my response to people who were saying that would be, okay, but do you like, you know, do you like the Cassidy Insurance Building with pitched roofs and the third floor is in a pitched roof and it's a human scale and so forth, it's all in their apartments? Everyone goes, oh, I like that building.
Sure.
So it's a tough job to figure out what people are saying.
Yeah, I agree with you, Brian, but I'm not, I'm here to listen to residents, I'm not here to convince them of something else. So if they say to me, I don't want residential, I am responsible to figure out what the definition of what that looks like and how that means so that we're all using same definition basis. But I'm not here to talk them into it because that's how the plan has to go forward financially.
I hear you. It's a select, you guys have a tough job, but you owe, I think you owe the town not just representation. It isn't just count the votes and that's how you vote. It's, and you know this.
I wish it were that easy, Brian.
Yeah, I know, I know you know this, so I don't mean to preach to you, but it's, it's, you may, the select board may have to say, what in our judgment works?
Right, correct.
And can we make things work? And democracy is part of it, for sure. I mean, we had people come to our meetings, we listened, we tried to, tried to understand what they're saying.
Yep.
But, but people say a lot of things. I mean, at one of our public meetings, somebody stood up and said Humphrey Street is dark, you know, and it's like, you know, it's not dark. I mean, whatever plan you're for, Humphrey Street is not dark. It's an east-west street, it gets sunlight all, the whole day and it's just an amazing, you know, amazingly light street. But in any case, the west, we heard from people, we don't want a westcott, we don't want a Concordia and...
Well, the westcott wasn't even built when we started talking about the evolution of the site.
Yeah, but people, well, people came...
But in retrospect, yes, okay, but what I want to...
People came to our committee meetings and said that.
Listen, I think that we, you've heard from all of us say, we appreciate your committee's work gratefully. We didn't envy the position you were in, we saw the struggles and you guys pushed through it. That's something to be commended, I think, we all agree on that front. And, you know, we just got the report, appreciate the presentation. And I think we have to digest this, get it back on a agenda in the near future to have conversations about what this report looks like for all of us and where we go from here. So really appreciate both of you coming and all the hard work.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Is it brief? Appreciate it.
You spent nine months waiting for this result. I would suggest that you go with an RFI or an RFQ to the business community and ask them, in a short period of time, I think you could probably get it in 60 or 90 days, real presentations from developers and users that would give you financials, that would give you uses, would give you renderings, and would give you a complete presentation in much less time. And their purpose is a selfish one, it's to get the highest and best use of the site. In order for you to reach a decision, you need as much of that information. Even if you don't want to hear it or you don't want to consider it, you should at least have it in front of you to be able to make an informed decision. And that doesn't happen unless you go out to the business community and ask them to respond, RFI or RFQ, no cost to the town.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Appreciate it.
Are you guys having, did you guys have a party after your last meeting?
Did you have, was that the Hawthorne?
To continue to participate, you know, in some fashion, I mean, what I presented here was just touching the tops of our, you know, of what we, Tara's not, I'm not volunteering.
No, I just, I wanted to be really clear here.
I've heard from many of your members that they're pretty much all set with the process, so...
I think, I just think we should be really clear that your committee's work is complete and this select board is very appreciative of it, but Tara, you guys are now retired. If you want to arrange your going-away party.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, review of special town meeting warrant. Link discussion and votes on articles for inclusion in the warrant. Thank you again, Brian and Tara. And Charlie and Neil, and everybody's leaving now.
Neil, don't lose that envelope.
Okay. Nick, you ready?
So, yes, this is for us to go through to vote on your recommendation, as long as you all are comfortable in doing that tonight. Nothing has changed. The one question that is outstanding in this is the adjustment to tax rates. We can...
Hold on one second, Brian, your microphone, Brian.
Brian.
Your microphone is still live, so although we can't hear you, people at home might, so I just want to caution you. Thank you.
Thank you, but let me go.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Nick, sorry.
That's fine. So we can go through in order, when we get the adjustment in tax rates, there's a determination that I would love to get from you all on where you would like that to be. And just in terms of preparation, I know I mentioned it, tomorrow we're getting together with the moderator, town council and others just to make sure we have things lined up, so...
Great.
You know, I wanted to give you that background, but this is for you all to have discussion on individual topics if you'd like or to make recommendations.
Okay.
Are we looking at voting before FinCom?
They are, they are meeting tomorrow, so if you would like, we could have discussions and hold the vote till that evening. I don't necessarily think that's the best from a planning standpoint, so I'm already going to try to give you an update on assessors right then, but...
We have, yes, we have in the past, because of, we traditionally wait till FinCom. We have in the past voted the evening of. Amy, I recall in the past, has gotten that information to the moderator so that we could then present the, you know, favorable action five to O and then we could do that.
We can do that and if we're going to...
I mean, I think for the financial articles, it probably makes sense. I don't know, how do others feel?
I mean, they all have a financial impact.
They all have financial impacts.
In fairness, if we're going to do that, we can, we could use tonight for any discussion or request additional information you may need. And I think, you know, the one, I would defer to you now that I know this and I apologize, but on the tax rate adjustment, is that one that you normally leave to FinCom first or that you would set a number and they would recommend?
I think we've set the number, we've set the number and then they've recommended, then they've gotten on board or not. I don't know how.
So, I mean, are we really going to hold off on approving bills of prior fiscal years?
No, I don't...
Let's just, let's take a vote and move forward.
Right.
So Article One is, as David just mentioned, the approval of prior year's fiscal bills, prior fiscal year's bills. They're listed, we can speak to them each individually, or if you have any questions, Patrick and I are here to answer them.
But do these continue to grow? I mean, it seems like the first time we saw the warrant, there were three or four items and now there's, you know, 15 or so.
It's like the same list as last meeting.
Yeah, I don't believe anything's been added since we were together two weeks ago.
Nothing has changed since we last looked at the warrant. From when we first looked at the warrant and last time we met, a couple items were added that we added to the table that were presented to you last time, but nothing's changed since then.
But nothing's changed since, okay, I wasn't at the last meeting, so that makes sense that it has changed since I was last in.
Yes, it did.
So it's yes to both, you and Danielle. It has not changed since Danielle's seen it, it has changed since you've seen it.
Okay, fair, fair.
All right, so I'll entertain a vote then of action to support the article number one, approving the bills.
So moved.
Second.
And we will take a roll call, Doug?
Aye.
Mary Ellen?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And Danielle?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so five to O, we vote favorable action on that. Article two.
Article two, to give it a thumbnail that I'm sure Patrick may cringe at, we're doing the shuffle for things that we know need to be shuffled. So rather than waiting until the end of the year, we want to make these adjustments right now.
Yep.
So that it, what's appropriated reflects what we anticipate actually spending.
Okay.
So I'm making motion.
So moved.
Oh. Mary Ellen? Doug?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And I am an aye. So we are five O there. And that was favorable, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just to make sure.
Article three had been related to my overly optimistic hope that we might be able to have at least one come before us. I do not anticipate that, so this is one that when we get to town meeting, we'll be moving through regardless. So I was going to talk to them tomorrow about what, whether it's withdraw, indefinitely postpone. I don't know exactly what language.
Okay.
The moderator would prefer. And we'll figure that out tomorrow with council, so we can, we can leave that to Monday.
Okay, we can table that. Article four.
Article four is an annual transfer that we do for the homeless and foster care transportation costs.
So I, I just want to comment on this. What we, what we did was, this actually, we just started doing this a few years ago in making sure that when this money came back in, it didn't sit in our op, it didn't sit in our town account, that it was moved over to the schools. That was an agreement we made, I think it was two and a half years ago. But, which it, it should go to schools. However, there is a new situation that's involved. The schools now have, in the revolving account, they have $574,000 that they have retained in this, in this revolving account.
You're talking about the Nahant revolving account?
It's called, yep, the Nahant revolving account. And I think, I think we should move this to the, the later town meeting until we resolve what's happening with that revolving account.
But what does this have to do with foster care transportation reimbursement?
So this, there would be no reason to put this, this money could still sit in the operating, in the town operating account versus moving it over into the schools. The schools are already sitting on five, I think the question that I have here, the schools are sitting on $574,000 in the re, in the Nahant revolving account. The money was never spent on any budgeted items last year. So until we really figure out what has happened there, why was that never disclosed prior to the budget? Even when we're looking to approve the budget, I think this money should still remain in the town account and get everything worked out, and then figure out what to do from there.
Have you, has, I think Nick has had conversations about that revolving account with the schools, correct?
I have.
Right, so there is resolution, or is there not? Or we're at least clear on the process of what happened?
They, they provided in a meeting with, it was Patrick and I sat, sat down with Jason and Cheryl to talk about how and.
And why and what.
How and why. The, the discussion of that, I don't know, you know, with this, obviously, I defer to how you all would like to move forward.
I, before any money is.
Well, I think.
I want to, I want to know what's going on here. And, you know, there's a lot of money. This is almost $600,000 is sitting in an account that the school committee is calling their, their cushion.
But I think we should be really careful before we start calling things that way, right?
I'm only repeating the school committee. I'm not, I'm repeating the school.
Our town administrator has had conversations with the school department that are, that are explanations about what you're talking about. So I don't want to go and say that they're doing X, or they're padding, or, without really knowing the full picture. Right? And I think we need more information to know what's happening.
I have no idea.
Right?
Right.
Exactly.
Just to be clear, I'm, I am only repeating exactly what was said at school committee meetings.
You're saying at the school committee meeting, they used the word cushion?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Town Administrator, can we get a memo or some kind of written notification? So we can all be brought up to speed on this?
How they defined it to you or what's the conversation?
And there's a memo that I believe was drafted. I may, I actually think I am now confusing things with it. But yes, we can put something together. We can share it before town meeting. We could share it in advance of that, but deliberate on it as a group, in person at, at that meeting, prior to town meeting. You know.
I would assume that memo would come from Cheryl.
Right.
For her to give an explanation on how that account got to its level and what the plan is.
Exact, and I would, I would coordinate with Jason and Cheryl, along with our finance staff, absolutely.
So, I mean, basically, you're saying, let's withhold $26,000 that we're under MOU to give them because you feel like we haven't resolved this other issue, which is much greater.
Yeah, I'm, that is what I'm saying. I'm saying, I don't want to, I don't want to do anything financially until we have real clarity on what's happening.
I'm going to say that I disagree with that.
It feels a little bit like punishing when we don't know the full picture. And I know you're saying, like, you don't know the full picture, so you don't want to give it to them. And I'm saying, well, I don't know the full picture, so I'd rather give it to them. So.
It's not like.
I don't want to speak for anyone that works for the schools or the school committee, but I think that we would have an opportunity to ask for greater explanation and more detail as a part of the budget process that we're engaging in. And I, my sense so far is that there would, there would be an openness to having a discussion around how and why they came to the conclusions and made the decisions that they did. The leverage is certainly different as we get into a full budget discussion as opposed to a reimbursement that's under MOU. That would be my only feedback.
I don't want to fault them in advance when there is a very logical reason and explanation for what they did, what they did, personally.
And it seems a little bit like, I, I get the idea, but it seems.
Punitive.
I, I know it's all school committee, you know, school money, but it seems to be kind of mixing a couple of things up. And I think if I'm reading, understanding, I'm not sure why we're not directly talking about what's happening, except for the fact that the schools aren't here to talk about it for themselves.
Right.
But.
I'll, I'll answer that directly, Doug. Yes, I would like them to be here to discuss the decision-making process, rather than me paraphrasing a conversation.
Yeah, right. I just wanted to make that explicit, just in case people were trying to understand what was going on here. But I do think that if, I understood what you were saying, Nick, that, that $600,000 is still going to be there. Either it's going to be, I don't know what the flexibility is for the schools to spend that money on, you know, whatever they want, or there are restrictions on it. But they'll either spend it on, you know, so I guess, first of all, do we know the answer to that question? Is it totally flexible what they spend it on or not?
My understanding is that they could have spent it completely down to zero.
So long as it was in pursuit of the education of Nahant students, right?
It has to be used for, for educational purposes. Nahant stu, for educational purposes, which means the middle school and the high school.
And it can be spent on general education.
And that they were.
There's, there is flexibility to it, but I, honestly, I would much prefer that this discussion includes members of the school staff, school leadership.
So that we're not misrepresenting anything.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, so maybe this is a very clear one that we should wait to vote on until we, at least until before town meeting, right before town meeting, to see if there's more information we can get.
Okay. Does any, everybody agree with Doug?
Yep.
We'll table it till then.
What, I don't really, what, what did Doug, so what does Doug?
I think you're saying to table it till.
To table it, Doug, is that your?
The first.
Table articles.
Yeah, just, just for the next week, until we have, you know, our final, final vote on things right before town meeting.
Table the discussion of the vote, not the warrant article.
Right.
I, I think it's apples and oranges, but, I mean, I'm certainly happy to go with what.
Okay. We can always circle back. Let's move on to Article Five. And this is to rescind a vote under Article Six of the May twenty-five annual town meeting, transfer of free cash or special education reserve fund. You want to?
Are we on six, is it? I'm sorry.
Sorry. Yep, Article Five, which is to rescind Article Six.
Okay, I, that's where I get confused.
Yeah, sorry.
My eyes moved between the two. This is, it was an identified exceedance of the, I believe it's two percent cap that is supposed to be in the reserve fund, that Cheryl identified, alerted other staff, and they worked through sort of what the best way to do it. The state requires that you do not exceed two percent, I believe the number is. Again, I apologize if I'm misspeaking, but I don't think I am. And this would get them back under that threshold, so as not to have violated the special acts of 2016, I believe.
And can you remind us what the transfer of free cash under Article Six at the May twenty-twenty-five annual town meeting was? Was that two hundred, was that two hundred thousand or four, it was four hundred thousand?
Four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Four hundred thousand?
I, I don't remember.
Patrick?
It was four hundred thousand.
Oh, good memory, David. Okay. So basically, to say in layman's terms, we authorized the movement of this money. Moving that money would have put them over their threshold that the state requires they stay under. The money never was moved.
Correct.
So they never, they never hit their threshold because the money, money was never moved. But now we're rescinding the authorization so that the money does not get moved and put them over their threshold.
Correct.
And I think.
And the money, just, if I can just finish that, it closes out to free cash because it's not appropriated to anything if this were to pass.
Okay.
So it doesn't go directly back into the general fund to be spent this year. It closes out to free cash at the end of the fiscal year.
Right, which Patrick is.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
The reason we moved four hundred over was because they were going to have to deplete the entire special education fund. Patrick, that's what my notes show from last year. But they didn't have to deplete the special education fund. They actually, I think, finished it at four fifty, and then the state also sent out another one fifty.
Question or comment, Mary Ellen?
Is that your recollection?
I would say maybe less specifically, more generally. I think there was anticipated cost, you know, forecasted need for that fund. The need is under, and obviously, the vote would have put this account over some statutory limit.
Okay.
So.
Right.
Operationally, it was not, you know, raised to us that it would be a concern to not have these funds because between Medicaid receipts, which go directly into the special education reserve fund, and the transfer contemplated in the next article, and the balance that's already accrued in there, it's within limits and also meets, you know, the needs as far as I was, you know.
Right, but currently, their fund should be, I think, because when I first heard this, I thought, well, what, they're not going to have, they won't have the four hundred thou, they won't have the four hundred thousand. But when I did a little bit of research, they do have, they do, that was an anticipated need, but they didn't need it at the end. They still have, they still finished out the year at, I think, four fifty or close to it. And then the state also advanced another, another one fifty or one fifty-three to multiple municipalities. So they should be up to probably close to six hundred now, which is where they, where the agreement actually is, that there should be a $600,000 level.
And I can confirm they ended the fiscal year with four thirty-eight, nine eighty, not including the $400,000 that was anticipated to be transferred.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so I, I'll move to have the select board support this.
Yeah, I'll second.
Mary Ellen?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Okay. Similar, similarly but different is to then, to then appropriate.
Correct. And this is the agree, this is the MOU, or the MOA MOU that we have with them at the end of the fiscal year, based on turnbacks and other savings, and that this is what we would be transferring to them as part of that agreement.
And this is under the two percent threshold?
Correct.
Great. And when does?
Vote.
Oh, so, okay. Second, you said, David? Uh, did you say second?
Danielle.
Oh, Danielle, sorry. Uh, David?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Mary Ellen?
I'm a no, until we really understand the whole financial situation here.
Okay, I am an aye. So I just want to, maybe, it doesn't have to be now, it would just be great. Maybe you could just explain when these funds get moved? Because part of the, like, if we had moved that four hundred thousand earlier, then what would have happened? Or like, what, why didn't it get moved? When should it have gotten moved? When does this get moved? You don't have to answer now, we can.
Yeah, no, I, I, I cannot answer that, as you're well aware, turning and looking at me with that smile. As to why it did not happen at the time, I, that is a timing issue that I would defer.
It can't happen until we vote.
No, no, no.
No, 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 no. We voted in twenty twenty-five to appropriate those $400,000. They never got moved.
From free cash.
Our finance department didn't move it.
From.
Is that what it is?
No, it would have to come from free cash, and it can't get.
It was from last year's, wasn't it?
I can articulate, I talked to the accounting firm a little bit about this. So the $400,000 was voted in May, and votes are either counted towards FY twenty-five or FY twenty-six. This was a transfer into an account, not the operating budget. So it was interpreted FY twenty-six. So it's, it's, our free cash is already reduced by this vote because it was voted prior to year end.
Okay.
So free cash accounts for this $400,000. So it's less knowing that this money is intended to be transferred into this fund in FY twenty-six. So by rescinding the vote, those funds will then be available when we close out this fiscal year, and it'll flow back into certification.
But it means we're, we can't count on, we can't count four hundred thousand in our free cash evaluation.
It's not, it wouldn't be available to appropriate for other purposes during this year, correct.
So just to put a finer point on it, Patrick, it is not that we didn't move it. It is that we should not have moved it yet, or should we have moved it?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Yes.
So then, for Article Six, then when, on the timeline, do they receive those funds if this gets voted on in favorable action by town meeting in December? You don't have to answer now either, we can.
I will defer to the accounting firm because they're the experts on the timing of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, is that, is that a net number, or is that an additional ninety-four?
This is an additional, so this is, we, we're taking back the four, four hundred, and we're giving them ninety-four, eighty, ninety-four, eight hundred sixty-four. Two separate things.
Entry.
I just want to understand the operation of events, and you're going to get back to me.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Well, I'll learn from it.
Great.
Article seven is the adjustment to the tax rate, which we have not set a number for. And I know tonight, we talked about where we anticipate the tax rate being. So rough estimate, it's, you know, approximately fifteen dollars of impact for every hundred thousand dollars in the buydown. So it's a decision that is obviously left to the board, and FinCom and others, I will say, it is outside of sort of good financial practice to be spending this free cash on things that are not one-time, and we've sort of made this a, an annual event.
We have.
So it, it's just, I want to acknowledge that before, you know, we will obviously take whatever direction and vote is decided. But ideally, free cash would be spent on a one-time expense in many communities. That's something like capital expense that may not have been anticipated or something like that, as opposed to this. But as you think about what number you may want, I just wanted to give you that sort of approximately fifteen dollars. And it's something that we can also wait to act on in case we have better information come the first. And it's something that we can also wait to act on in case we have better information come the first. But in terms of thinking about it, for every hundred thousand dollars we spend on this, it's approximately fifteen dollar impact on the average home.
Right, but this is the context about the school though, right? In terms of the promise that was made is-
Right.
Is that, is that, that's the reason why we do this, Nick? It is kind of a capital expense. Do you know that history?
A bit. I, I, it's still something that I just wanted to note, even said, being my first time through the cycle with you all.
Yeah. So, right, I mean, I don't know if someone else wants to try to explain it, but there was a, you know, a goal of trying to keep the, the impact to, to, correct me if I'm wrong.
I, I understand what you're saying. It's a, to mitigate the impact of the debt exclusion that earned the support of town voters. This was part of the discussion.
Right.
But I don't think, I think what we've said multiple years now is, was, was the intention, the first year, the second year, how long were we going to maintain the, um, reduction of impact for the entirety of the debt?
Yeah.
That was the promise.
As long as, as long as we had sufficient free cash.
Well, yeah, I mean, we made a promise.
Vote, vote for the school. It's not going to cost you more than the average homeowner, more than three hundred, three hundred and fifty dollars.
And so what is our status with free cash? Uh, right, that's the relevant question here, right?
That's, that keeps us within, within our financial guidelines, Patrick.
I can recap the free cash position for everyone compared to the policies. Our policy is to maintain three to five percent of free cash compared to our budget. So this year, we came in at four point four percent, which means we have, uh, one million seventy thousand dollars to appropriate throughout the fiscal year for the various purposes that may come before town meeting to do so. So that would be within policy, the maximum that could be used between, you know, considering reducing the tax rate, voting for, um, you know, any increases to the budget that come after we set the tax rate and, you know, first year collective bargaining. Historically, we've sometimes used free cash to fund, um, all those different things. So that's the context that we're, we're in as far as, you know, available resources.
And what we just heard is that tax rate is going to be going up significantly, right?
Ten and a half percent.
Record high.
And our traditional amount that we've been contributing in this way has been somewhere between eight hundred and fifty thousand and one point two million, I believe.
So I would just like to make a distinction. The tax rate is not going to be record high, the tax bill will be higher. I think it's an important distinction because the community has made a concerted effort over more than a decade to make sure the tax rate has lowered. So I just, I, that's a distinction I wanted to make.
We've made an effort to make sure the tax bill.
There, I'm just saying, there's a distinction and, uh, something needs to be distinguished between the rate and the bill that I wanted to highlight.
Yes, that, that's true. The rate itself is also going up quite a bit, almost ten percent too.
Yeah, but Doug, to, uh, sorry, it's late. Um, you were saying eight hundred and fifty K to one point one million is what we've traditionally spent in the past to smooth that hit to the average tax bill. But with the CBAs and the other things sort of lingering out there, I don't-
You really don't have that much.
I don't think we have that much, quite frankly. So we have to be, uh-
Maybe.
We have to be thoughtful, is all.
Is there information that we could provide between now and, or provide to you that evening so that you could have a number? I just want to make sure that you guys are making-
If there's any headway that we make with any collective bargaining agreements, I think that would be pertinent, right? If, I'm just saying, hopeful, wishful thinking.
Between now and December first?
Yeah.
Wishful thinking.
We've also put money away for CBA agreements too.
So-
Yeah, there's money in the salary reserve.
We have a salary reserve. The, the contract is subject to the negotiation and it may or may not fall within the reserve that we currently- That is, we're not at a settled position to be able to-
Estimate.
Say finally that the salary reserves will cover it.
Okay, is there-
I don't see how we can, I don't see how we can, I don't see how we can put anything towards it, but-
Towards what, sorry, be specific?
I don't see how we can put any money towards it.
Towards what?
I don't.
By down of reducing the tax.
Right, what we're talking about.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
But-
What we were-
Too many unknowns.
Can we, okay.
There's a way, I don't, I just don't know how to figure it out.
Doug, what were you going to say?
Uh, well, I think that's what I was going to say, because I'm surprised you hear Mary Ellen say that. But, um, uh, so, but beyond that, uh, I don't really unders, maybe I, maybe I missed the meeting or something, but, um, I don't see how we can not put money towards it in this environment.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I'd, I'd like to have, I'd like FinCom to opine.
There you go.
Yeah.
Prior.
And I'm really good with that.
Okay, so they're meeting tomorrow.
Great.
Patrick and I are both there. In addition to that, are there items or pieces of information that you would like us to try to prepare for you in addition to whatever their opinion is to bring to you on December first?
I think it's got to be, what is it going to look like? We have to have a scale of, you know, if we put six hundred thousand towards it, eight hundred thousand towards it.
Okay.
Yep. A million towards it, what is, what does it actually look like? What's the impact going to be on free cash? I think you should also draw out what free cash is going to possibly look like over the next three years, what your projections are looking like.
That gets a little tricky, but I will see what I can do.
That, I will caution, is way more art than science.
Can we, can we do, can we, one year?
Well, at least we have four hundred thousand dollars coming to us, right?
Yes.
That's sort of a joke, Patrick.
Well, I think the other, the other piece is, you know, I know some of this is sensitive, but like, what is the, the pretty well-known other needs for free cash?
This year?
Yeah, in, in, yes, in the near term. Uh, with the, the million that we now see, a million four, if you count the four hundred thousand, what are the-
I think, I think Patrick said you can't count it until fiscal year twenty-
We don't have access to it until next year.
We don't have access to it, so we can't spend it.
No.
Right. I think if we were going to itemize a list of things we need this year, that would be, you know, the things on this warrant alone, Articles Four and Five, if they pass, that's a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars from free cash. And collective bargaining is a big question mark. Nothing is settled right now. We could, you know, prognosticate on that, um, maybe come back with something. And, yeah, it's really hard to predict, you know, what, what needs would pop up. But I guess those are our knowns right now.
And Doug, maybe it would be useful for us to just look back at the things that were truly unanticipated so that we can give you some sense of that. You know, just a quick historic look back.
Okay. All right, so I think we are moving on.
Set that aside and we'll-
Please.
Come back to FinCom, okay. That was seven. Eight is, um, the project at, uh, the library for the side entrance. Jonathan heard today that we will not have an answer until December fifth. He is well aware and it has been well communicated that this is a project that will only move forward if that grant is awarded. Otherwise, it will stay in the pile along with all the other capital requests that we have.
Okay.
And just again, by way of background, so everyone's on the same page. The, the only reason we're coming with this is because that, the opportunity for that money, plus it would be a, a single mobilization, um, very likely when it comes springtime, when construction starts back up in the front entrance, to be able to do it all together at a, the most economical way possible, I'll say.
Yep.
I won't promise that it's cheaper, but the most economical way that we can.
So with that caveat, I'd, I'd, I'd make a motion to support Article Eight.
Second.
Um, Doug?
You're muted.
You can give us a thumbs, oh, you have to say the word, sorry. Don't want to get in trouble. Um, Mary Ellen?
I just have a quick question. Does this have to say, does this say in here, does, does the language have to say?
It says in the comment, the grant has not yet been-
But does the article itself have to say that?
I can ask that tomorrow if you all would like to wait on this one as well? Because we'll be with town council and the moderator.
If we pass this, this, this goes through. It doesn't, I mean, doesn't, it has to go through what the article says? If you could find that out.
For tomorrow.
Okay.
Is the sense of the board that it, I'm just trying to plan for time on the first now. This is one that, assuming we word it and everything's on board.
Straw poll.
Yeah.
We can move it quickly whereas there might be some other discussion on other topics. I just want to, we all set enough time.
Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Doug, generally supportive if so long as it reflects what we just discussed.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part you said.
I said, uh, we're just taking a straw poll to s- to let Nick know we're generally supportive of the article, bearing in mind that there may be a amendment.
Finalize the language.
Finalizing the language to make sure that it's, it states exactly that it is only going forward if the grant opportunity is awarded.
Okay, because we won't know before town meeting.
Correct.
Okay, yep.
All right, the park grant for Abbott Park.
Park grant, it, it's a, we already received this grant. This is the town match. This is a project that I believe is in its final phase-
Right.
Of a multi-phase effort.
Motion to approve, Article Nine.
Second.
Favorable action. Um-
Aye.
Mary Ellen's an aye, Doug?
Aye.
Danielle's? An aye?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Aye, I'm an aye, okay, five oh. Okay, great, moving on to ten then, the last one.
Article ten, as drafted, just for everyone's understanding, was with the idea that there may be personal property, that we were trying to come to some agreement uh, with the tenant that's vacating, that they have completed their auction, so that is not, no longer an issue. So, you know, it, it is slightly more expansive than it had been in the past and I know that's something that-
Yeah, I, I mean, we all got an email this morning from prior select board member Neil Duffy, who had questioned, you know, why the language was what it was. The, the reasoning being, obviously, we were just making space for that personal property sort of question mark, but now we have an answer, so maybe we can alter the language back to the original authorization.
Right, so this is one I've already talked to Tom McEnany about to finalize again tomorrow. I also, I called Neil to ask to make sure that what I was anticipating working through tomorrow matches. I think that there were two concerns. One, it was sort of more expansive, um, but also the language here, so, I think it says any use. And the any use was intended to give us the latitude to be able to do the personal property.
Personal property, yeah.
So one of the things that, um, was suggested in the course of that conversation was to go back to the language before, which was, I believe, restaurant hospitality or restaurant. It's basically matching the restaurant language that was used previously in authorizations was the, the thrust of what that email was.
So, so can, I mean, can we also talk about the, like, the, the duration? Like, the, the period shall not extend beyond December thirty-one of twenty-eight? You know, the original intent when we purchased the Hawthorne was to really keep, you know, a tight leash on the select board, uh, the town from, you know, from really, from really going, you know, and doing things, you know, uh, in a, in a, in a manner that's, that, that was just more long-term than what was, than what would the, than what the original intent was. So, I mean, I kind of like how we had done this in twenty-two where we said, all right, we'll do this through the end of twenty-three. And then we extended throughout, always seeking town meeting approval. I, I, I'm just, I just have concerns and, you know, Brian Watson, um, you know, spoke to those earlier, so I don't need to really go into those, uh, in great detail. But, you know, I, I really think that the, the leash should be much, much shorter, um, on this. Just, just me.
Yeah, David, I'm not sure if you were part of the conversation that we had about this. That might have been the meeting that you weren't here recently. Um, but we had an extended conversation about this and it was, it, there, there's a lot of uncertainty, right? And we want to make sure that if someone's going to come in temporarily, that they feel like they have enough time. You know, we, I think the conversation started at eighteen months and then it went to two years and it went to three years and it was always up to, um, you know, this is, this is the warrant language to give us the flexibility. Doesn't mean we necessarily will enter into a lease that's three years. But at least we have the authorization to do it. That may still not satisfy what you're concerned about, but that was, that was the thinking. If it's, if someone's going to come in and do something, quote, temporarily, how much time do they need to make it worth it?
Yeah, I mean, and I'm, and, and just from a financial and a feasibility perspective and from a banking perspective, three years isn't, isn't feasible. Five years likely isn't feasible. You know, if you're talking a building of, of this size with the deferred maintenance and capital requirements that is, that is, that would be necessary to, to, to bring in, um, you know, a restaurateur of a, of a certain level. Uh, you're gonna, you, you're, you're talking a, a ten-year term. So, at a minimum. And what this does is this, this opens the, this opens the door. And the power of inertia is, is certainly, uh, is pretty powerful. You know, had the, you know, had, had Hawthorne said, we're, you know, we want another year, I think this is a different conversation. But I, I, I think this, I think this is going to be resoundly defeated, uh, on the, at, at town meeting if it's, if it's presented as such. So I, I, I don't want to have a, I don't want to have a vacant building, but I don't, also don't want to have something that is, that is, you know, that is, that has a three-year, has a three-year lease. I just, I, I think we need to think, um, outside of the box as to how we can, uh, how we can accomplish this. So Mr. Patzios's idea for an RFI may be, you know, may be something that is, that is, that is interesting. So we can solicit some, some opportunities. But I, I would, I would really make sure that we're, that we're informing and taking this into, uh, into town meeting each step of the way. It's just my personal feeling.
Yeah, I think even if you, so, I think if you play out the timeline, I also am intrigued by the idea of an RFI. But if an RFI turns into an RFP, you're talking about like six months before we're even getting a lease maybe going. So now, you know, you're talking about just over two years of lease hold until you're up to that backstop anyways, right? So I think that's why, you know, we're trying to figure out what that sweet spot is that gets us still moving forward with discussion and long-term strategy, not cutting off our nose to spider's face from a respondents, right, proposition? But then also not giving too long of a leash so that town meeting, like, it, it's almost near impossible to figure out what that sweet spot is. Um, so I hear what you're saying, but I just think if we are going to RFI or RFQ and then turning into RFP, like, the timing of that is really more like six to nine months before that building is occupied again. And so then you're looking at a, basically a two-year lease.
No, I, I, I certainly hear you. And, you know, just it's, it's my concern that the town is going to continue, you know, when, when we, when this was, when this was contemplated for a special meeting, special town meeting vote in June of twenty-two, you know, really it was, all right, the restaurant's going to continue to operate until it, and, and, until it doesn't operate, at which point the town would then demolish the property because of the costs of insuring, uh, the property and to, to really make sure that there were not, there were, there were not going to be any, uh, any capital expenditures that the town was going to have to take on. You know, if, if we're going to RFP this out through the end of December thirty-one of twenty-eight, it's very likely that the town is responsible for any of the systems that break in this, in this building, not to mention-
No.
Um, not to mention insurance, what do you mean, no?
We can, we can write an RFP and just say that we, you know, we won't take-
I can write an RFP and wish for a million dollars too, but just the likelihood of that happening is, is, it's just not realistic. Mary Ellen, I mean, we can, we can want that to happen. So I, I, but I think we need to look at, you know, other uses that may not be restaurants, that may be town uses. But again, we're still going to have these, we're still going to have the same issues with insurance. We're still going to have the same issues with, with capital expenditures and things that are going to pop up on a, on a building that has considerable, considerable deferred maintenance.
Well, if we're thinking-
That's my concern.
Go ahead, Doug.
Well, I was just trying to kind of, you know, think about the kind of logic, um, here, like, you know, David, I, you know, I, you know, trust your sense of, you know, what the commercial real estate market is. And if, if it's very unlikely that someone's going to, you know, uh, be involved in this. I mean, we, we, you know, we did have someone earlier tonight, seemed really interested, I don't know, but, um-
He's not, he's not a commercial real estate guy.
Okay, okay, all right. I don't, I don't, it sounded like he was a restaurateur, I, I don't know, but, um, so, I guess, I guess we'll see in a way, right? I mean, the, the idea is, we don't want to extend this, you know, forever, obviously, um, in terms of a temporary situation. We need to come to a, you know, a final conclusion about exactly how we want to proceed with the Hawthorne property, uh, in general. Uh, we have this kind of, still this interim state that none of us are excited about, but I think we're getting there towards the final, um, conclusion. If we have this authority, again, you know, we can test the market, see whether or not, for whatever reason, on what terms, someone's interested in being there temporarily. If that doesn't work out, then we can, you know, the fallback will be to think about, um, you know, more recreations based or, you know, whatever it's going to be in the short run. And, you know, moving on, maybe simultaneously, you know, we do need to take into consideration, I do think that, you know, what Charlie said is interesting, uh, you know, how we play that out uh, in terms of, uh, different options. But I, I do see this as kind of just increasing our optionality at the moment. Not going way too long, but at least giving it some chance of someone being interested and investing enough to make it worthwhile for, you know, a year or two. We'll see, we'll see if anyone answers.
Nick, when in the, um, capital budget is the, was the demolition slated?
Twenty-seven or twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Okay, so then in theory, if we're taking what David said, right? And the, like, the assumption is sort of like we thought the Hawthorne maybe might stay till twenty-seven, maybe early twenty-eight, and we would demolish in twenty-eight. That's why, I mean, I know it, it was like a hope or a guestimate, but we're, it seems like we're not that far off by extending. If the Hawthorne had stayed, yes, we would have been in a different situation. We probably would be going year to year. It's a different-
We're continuing the same, what we had anticipated with potentially just a different vendor, right?
Right.
With a different leasing, you know, so to speak. Because if we, if- Because if we, if we thought Hawthorne was just going to stick around, to your point, for another year and a half, then we wouldn't even be having this conversation, right? But because they decided to leave early, it doesn't behoove us to sit there and look at an empty building for a year and a half, right? Why wouldn't we even give it a shot and see who is interested? Maybe nobody is, but we're not going to know that until we try.
Right.
We can't just assume that no decent respondents will happen, like, you know. That to me is just doing a disservice, right? We're, we're saying absolutely not, nobody's out there, even though, you know, Mike Kelleher came up and said whatever, and God knows how many people have contacted each one of us saying, oh, I've got an idea for it, I've got an idea for it. You know, so do we not, do we not give that its due? Do we not give it a chance, right?
Understood. And everyone that I have talked to, in fairness, everyone has, has said, this is an incredible space. I would, you know, I would give my left arm to, to do something in this space. But, you know, when the emotional part of your brain turns off and the logical part of your brain kicks on, you know, it, it does come down to finances. And, you know, so again, that's, that's the, that's the caveat with which I, with which I leave. I, I just want to have that, that discussion, because if, if that, if that was unsaid, and I did not have the chance to participate in that conversation last meeting, I do want to convey that at, at this meeting. So that's, that's it.
So would you feel better if the wording was two years versus the three years?
I'd feel better, I'd feel better with a shorter duration, Mary Ellen, yes.
Right. So my only worry is going, I'm, you know, I could, my only worry would be going less than two years, only because if I were, were a vendor coming in, I would, I would want to have, you know, a little bit more than a year, just to get my, get myself a little bit more grounded. And then that gives the select board time to vet out all the possibilities, look at all the scenarios, finish negotiating with the diocese and have a better plan.
That's a whole nother component to it.
It's a major key to all of this.
Of course, the piece of it, because that determines the space that you are really trying to, to plan for, whether it's.
Right. And it's like, you know, just because we put out something, depending on what kind of response we get, doesn't necessarily mean we have, if they're horrible proposals and whatnot, it doesn't mean we have to do it. But at least we're figuring, we're, we're putting it out there to see what we're going to get. You know, I mean, it's the only way you're going to know. Other than that, you're going to sit there and look at an empty building, and people in this town are already banging at the door of what are we doing with this property? It has been sitting there, and we have done nothing, right? And we have given no clue as to what we're going to do. And I think there's a real, you know, appetite of, people are sick and tired of it and figure it out, right?
I think, to be a little bit fair to Brian and his team, there's definitely been stuff done. I, I know, that's not how you meant it, but, but we have not, we have not moved forward in a plan. We have been part of, in the planning stage, and we need to move towards the execution.
But metaphorically, you know, we've been planning, right, planning, but nothing has happened for people to visibly see, any different than what has existed in the past, right? From when you made that vote in 2022 to buy it, right? And nothing has visibly changed, other than, you know, philosophical thinking or, or us planning or, you know, conceptualizing. That's, that's the reality, right?
David, would you do, would you like to amend to a two-year term? Would you be supportive, voting in favor of a two-year term?
I, I would, yeah.
Okay, I think in the, in the, to, to reach a 5-0 vote, I think that is more important to me to show that the board is, you know, altogether in support of temporary use like we've already had. So whether it's two years or three years, like, while, while three years I think is better for an RFP respondent, if that is what gets us to the point of showing that we are in unification over this idea going forward, I think that's most important, so.
Can I ask a question for you, Boon or anything?
Yes, please do.
So, again, this is something we're going to talk about tomorrow to refine the language to narrow the, the time. But also, do we want to limit to, I, one of you had mentioned whether or not limiting a restaurant was appropriate. And that, that was the idea, was we were going to match the language that had been used in the original authorization.
The original authorization was like hospitality, restaurant.
I don't think we should limit it.
Right.
You think we should leave it unlimited, but make it two years?
Yes.
Well, my worry is, if I'm a town meeting member, I don't, I don't want to see housing in there. I don't want to see.
Okay.
You're not going to be used.
Revenue-producing, could you say something along those lines, right?
Rewrite, we're like.
Legal revenue-producing, I don't know, right?
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think realistically you can have, you can have temporary housing, I just.
Could you somehow modify it, that it specifies industry, right, or a certain industry? I don't know.
It may be something that we, you can leave to the floor of town meeting for people.
Oh, no, no, no.
Let's have direction from us at least.
You all agreed very quickly, which is great. But I, you know, going, if we don't limit it, then it's, is it retail? And if retail, what use, like, I just think that's the type of follow-up question that you would get from the floor, is, what, if it's not going to be limited to a restaurant and that's a use that everyone has been comfortable with and comfortable with the town as a quote-unquote landlord of it?
It's not limited prior, actually. Here's Article 13, and it says.
It's a continued use.
For such purpose as the select board shall determine and on such terms and conditions as the select board shall deem appropriate.
Okay.
And to authorize the select board to enter all agreements and to take any action that may be necessary or convenient to accomplish the foregoing purposes, or take any action related thereto. So it was broad prior, so I suggest we leave it. We just limit it to its timeframe.
We're just limiting to December 31 of 28.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, I'll just, I'll just say, I think, consistent with what Katie was saying, like, I, I personally don't think two years is the right, I don't think it's long enough. I, I understand the concerns about that, but I, I'll vote for it. That's what we're going to, you know, go towards to have it be unanimous. But I'd rather have the warrant article give us three years. We can decide differently what we want to do in terms of the RFP. But, you know, once we're locked in with two years, and someone says, oh, that's not enough, now we're stuck. So I just want to be, I, I mean, theoretically, you know, if we were that stuck, we could have another special town meeting to, like, extend it on specific terms. But that is the potential downside of that.
Well, the, the, the prior article was extending the use. It really didn't give.
So the use, and speaking to KP, the use was the restaurant, and it was a withheld right of the Athenas family in the deal.
Okay.
To continue the use as a restaurant, which was why it was slightly different than doing an RFP that goes through a normal 30B procurement process. So that was what they were talking about, the difference was. The other, the flip side, not the flip side, the other alternative is a license, but it's replicable on both sides, which is not, it's even harder from a banking or commercial standpoint to say, after 30 days or 60 days, the town could just be like, no, we appreciate everything you did, but it's time to leave.
Yeah.
Or that they could do that to us. So the, the use was as a restaurant. I think that's where I may be not representing it as cleanly as, clearly as possible to you all. Like, it was a restaurant, it continued as a restaurant, so it wasn't going to be Petco, you know, like.
Yep.
It was that, I think that's, when, when we talk about limiting the use, that, that's more what I'm.
We also don't have, we also can just table this for this evening and take a, and, and pick this up at our, at our next meeting, so we can have some more information, we can all think about this a little more, too.
Yeah, the only thing I worry about, I don't disagree with you, but I, the only thing I worry about is how much time we have at that next meeting. So just being thoughtful of that, because we're, we're going to set the tax rate. We're going to answer all the articles we haven't answered tonight, and we're going to have a lengthy discussion about this article potentially.
You know, our goal is not to have a extended, short-term situation. Our goal is to get this wrapped up as quickly as possible, but also to be reasonable bringing somebody in, bringing somebody in there, so.
And avoiding, and avoiding an empty building for.
That's our.
That is, that is the main goal. That's the main goal. That's the main goal.
No, and we're looking to see if there's some revenue that we can generate, right? Let's not lose sight of what we have been, we've listened to you all night, right? $2.3 million deficit, like, yeah, we all have ideas of what we'd love this to be, but let's, let's talk about the reality we're in, right?
Right.
That's the goal of what we're trying to accomplish, even in the short term.
We're about to have the largest tax hike, you know, very long time. We are looking at serious times, and, you know, we're doing the best we can here.
Brian, can you make it an under 30 second? Yes, very quickly, please.
Yeah, I'm just, do I need the mic?
Yeah.
Yep.
This is, this is a super tough problem, and it's a super important question. So there's a, there's a lot of moving parts. So to, so what, what I think is helpful for, for everybody is, is to, is to take each moving part one at a time, and then, because I understand the sort of difficulty of where the select board is. It's, you got to take them one at a time, so you can have clarity on each part. For example, just forget the other parts for the moment and just say, the concern, the concern is revenue. I just heard people, the select board say the concern is revenue. So will it cost the town more to let the building just be empty for six months? Four months or six months? One, just compare, it's empty for four, six months. Or how much money will the town need to actually extend to this temporary op, this temporary operator? I mean, somebody who's coming in for two years or three years can't spend a whole lot of money upgrading the restaurant. I mean, just strictly revenue here. That's the reality. So, I mean, think about it. What, what restaurant guy is going to come in and do all that's involved to put a 22,000-square-foot building in shape? The second floor is not accessible by elevator. I, I, it, it feels not connected to the, to the way restaurant people will work. I mean, somebody can't come in and put $2 million into the building. You're going to say, here's a two-year lease, and, and you think anybody, anybody is going to put $2 million in?
Nobody's, nobody has tested.
No, but, okay, but revenue, will, the town will be.
Or a restaurant guy or gal.
Okay, so let me make it clear.
We need to focus on this.
Would you let, let me just speak for a minute. What are you afraid of? It's just going to come up at town meeting.
It's after, it's after 2:00.
You can hear it now, or you can hear it at town meeting. I mean, I'm sure.
We don't have to raise voices, we can stay calm and still participate. Please.
It's, it, it, it needs a calm discussion, right?
Well, that's what I said.
So think, so what are the economics of having some temporary person come in and set up a restaurant? For whether, whether it's two years or three years, it doesn't even matter, whether it's two years or three. What sort of money can that person spend to get that restaurant in business? You know, that person will have to spend money for plates, I mean, for everything to, to. I've been in the building, there's a lot of rehab, so that person has to spend X amount of dollars. So how much more can he give the town? He can't pay property taxes, he can't pay a big rent.
But you don't know that, right? You don't know any of that, because you don't even know who it would be. You have no idea.
No, I, I do know.
You're making assumptions, and we can't do that. We can't afford to do that.
What I know is, talk, talk to restaurant people and ask them, if it's realistic, is there any restaurant operator that'll come into a 22,000-square-foot building and start a restaurant? And knowing he's leaving in two years? Just ask restaurant people, don't take my word for it.
I think the RFP will ask the, the market, right? Like, that is the purpose of an RFP.
I think.
Whether we go out, hold on one second.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
One second.
Yeah.
Whether you go out for RFP regarding K1 or G1 and ask that question, or will you go out and ask our question, you're still giving space to let the market give the answer, right? That is the purpose of an RFP. So where we said, going back, not to go too far back, but to say, your, your RFP supposition requires residential to work, realistically.
Put mine aside, put the committee aside.
Brian, just let me finish, please. You're saying ours is a fool errand because it requires a $2 million investment.
By the town, by the town.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's not go down this path.
Okay, thank you.
If I can suggest.
Focus on the article.
The other thing, the other thing I want to say, Doug, Doug, the other issue is, the select board is paralyzed, and it's evident to the town, and will be evident to town meeting, that the, the select board is paralyzed from making a decision because it's pursuing the possible acquisition of another lot. And until, and until this.
That's not paralyzed.
We're not paralyzed at all.
We're not paralyzed at all.
Okay, okay, please, Brian, let it, let's stick to commentary on Article 10.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Article 10.
No, this relates to Article 10. You're trying to decide what to do.
There is a motion on the floor, the motion has been seconded. So is it, is the article as it stands?
As it stands. I make a motion to approve Article 10 as it stands.
Correct. Your, your second?
It's my second.
Okay. Doug?
You know, hold on, because we could also.
We can discuss it.
We, we.
Yeah, okay, we, yeah.
We could, we could also wait and vote on the, all we're talking about is two or three. That's all we're, that's all we're talking about. And if we want to think about it a little bit more, we could make this decision on the first.
This is just giving us the flexibility.
Right.
To exercise that, right? And that is the key, we're not, we're not, this motion I just made is not saying, let's vote to have a three-year lease of this piece, of this parcel. This gives us the flexibility to extend up to three years, right? It could end up being two, it could end up being two and a half, it could end up being nothing. If we get zero response, or zero response that would be valuable and revenue-producing to this town, right? But we are never going to know that until we take a step, and to Brian's point, not be paralyzed by this any longer. We need to act. It is on this board to do that, right? We're in these seats for a reason, and the time has come for us to actually do something. That's my feeling.
So the only quibble I have at that, of course, is that I would much prefer it to be 5-0 as well.
I agree with you. I agree.
And so, and so I, could we, could we haggle to two and a half, David?
Two and a half.
So we're haggling to go to June of 20, June 30 of 28.
We could even do two years from the date of the acceptance of the RFP, right? Or the awardal, the awarding of the.
I'd be more comfortable with knowing what the date is.
With a date definitive.
You know, if that.
I, I thought about that also, because I was like, well, the lease could be for two years from the date of the acceptance, but it is more clear to town meeting to work in definites.
And if we're trying to do, and if we're trying to make sure a building is heated, it makes, it makes sense for the term to end in the summer rather than.
Right, before the beginning of the fiscal year, right?
And at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
That's.
Brilliant, brilliant.
Keeping the pressure, keeping the pressure on us to get this done.
June 30th of 28. Okay, so that is the friendly amendment.
Yes. I, I will adjust, or I will second that friendly amendment by Doug, whichever.
Okay, so Doug made a friendly amendment.
Second.
Okay, so now we are voting on the article with a June 30th, 2028 date.
Aye.
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
David?
I, I'm still, I, I'm still not 100% comfortable. I will asterisk my vote. It's better than December 31 of 28, but I will, I, I think it's important that we're, that we're united.
You're an aye with an asterisk?
So I'm an aye with an asterisk.
Okay. I'm an aye. Okay. Well, the asterisks will not appear in the warrant, David.
Duly noted.
They can appear on the PowerPoint.
Sure, okay.
Duly noted.
All right, so that ends that. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Discussion, the consent agenda is a one-day liquor license for the senior center, here come the holidays, wine tasting, and meeting minutes from 11:05 to 11, end 11:10.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Doug?
Aye.
Mary Ellen?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Okay, moving on to select board time. Anybody, would anybody like?
I just had one thing.
You may, Nick.
The folks that put together the Veterans Day event that I failed to mention when I mentioned the breakfast, and not the event that happened after.
Yep.
It was a fantastic event.
At the Post.
Yeah.
Oh, at Town Hall, I'm sorry. I'm on the Monday.
On the Monday. Like, I forgot, Mike, the team, our guests, it was a fantastic event. I don't know why I stopped at breakfast, and I just wanted to make sure that I thanked them for the, the event that followed, as well, as, as well as the collation afterwards, yes. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. You're not interrupting. All right, does anybody have any additional comments?
I do. I just, once again, I want to thank Nate Beischheim and Nathan Kent for bringing us our meeting tonight. I also want to thank the DPW for hanging up the banners in the rain the day before. I want to bring everybody up to date. Solid Waste Committee is working hard at making sure we had a successful pumpkin toss. A lot of pumpkins were taken out of our waste stream. And Stephanie Newman actually was able to get a farm to take it for free, saving us over $500 from the year before. So what's, one thing that's really important from Solid Waste is the, the urgency of working together with the RFP. RFP, and getting an RFP ready for, you know, one of the largest expenses we have in our account. The Council on, not the Council, but the Swamp Scout for All Ages is finishing up their AARP audit that they had to do. They were almost finished with that. They also, at their last meeting, they talked about some issues that they have with not having benches at bus stops. Bus stops are not regulated by the town, they're regulated by mass transportation. So we've got to reach out to Jenny Arminey to try to help get some, something in there. We still have an issue with the retirement, the issue on the coding, but you already have that information. I just want to also recognize that we have, Bill Dandriel was recognized by the, he was honored by the Lynn Veterans Council. Mr. Dandriel is a gentleman who does enormous amount of work for veterans, and he is, he does not release press releases. He does the work, and he's an amazing man, and he was on the cover of the Lynn item yesterday, which is, was pretty exciting. So, and then in closing, I would like to have to this, added to this agenda, the Water and Sewer Commission. I feel very strongly that Andrea Moore and Mr., there is another gentleman, I can't read my handwriting here, that was put up for nomination. I would like to get something going on this. This is, I'm uncomfortable with what's happening, that people aren't being put on this committee, and I'd like it on our next agenda. Not the agenda prior to town meeting, but the third. And that's all I have for tonight.
Doug, you had something?
I do. Couple things. One, just a little CPA update. CPA Committee is being seated December twelfth, December tenth, again, thanks hugely to Diane, and the coalition will be supporting it, statewide coalition, et cetera. And the other thing is, I'm not sure if it was distributed to everyone, but Kleinfelder's work on the coastline is moving along, and I think they're probably in a, like, a close-to-final draft. Some very, very interesting, thought-provoking, et cetera, ideas. And, so I don't know if Marzi's in the room, but-
She's on vacation.
She's on vacation.
She's on vacation, Doug.
Yeah, so we should, Nick, if you can, make sure that we've, you know, got that raised up for presentation here as soon as is appropriate.
Will do.
Mary Ellen?
Will do.
That is very loud.
That's terrible.
Danielle, David?
No, I just want to thank Wayne Spritz for the pumpkin toss. I tossed a lot of pumpkins myself that day, and it was great. There were a lot of people there, it was really well-done.
Did you break that, that, you mean, the one that broke the-
I didn't break it, no, but, you know, I'm not very good with my aim, I'm not an athlete, but I did, I'll train for next year to see if I can do better. But thank you to Wayne, because he really did make it fun for the kids, and really put a lot of time in. It was a, it was a big accomplishment. And I just, I'm really proud of this board tonight for coming together and making the right call on this Hawthorne thing. It is a big issue in town, it's important to a lot of people. And, I mean, I have noticed that past two weeks, that parking lot was full, that restaurant was full, and it means a lot to a lot of people. I don't think it's quite that easy for us to just say, tear it down and start anew. So I think that we're being thoughtful, and that's what we're here to do. So, proud of us all for that. That's it.
David?
No, I just, Nick-
Have some vacation pictures?
What's that?
Have vacation pictures?
No, not tonight, not tonight. I'll share those at another time. So, thanks.
Two things really quick. If you didn't toss your pumpkins, because you keep them through Thanksgiving, you can recycle them through the black, what is it, Black Earth composting at the, behind the cemetery, or at the police station. So, don't put them in your trash, please. And then, I was let, I was informed today that the governor signed S-23, which is an act authorizing the appointment of our alternate members to the Conservation Commission, which was something that we were waiting, we passed through town meeting, and we were waiting for confirmation from the governor of. So, they'll mobilize to make sure that we now have alternates, and they have been informed. So, thank you, Jenny Arminey's team, for keeping us in the loop. And that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Aye.
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 David?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. Thank you, everyone.